Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought only about through legal and ethical procedures. B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. C, I will confine my board actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. And I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. D, I will carry out my responsibility to administer the schools, put together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. E, I will recognize the authority rests with the Board of Education. I will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of my friends. G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert, my fellow board members interpret this as the aspirations of the community for in-school age. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available as consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrator of Office. I, I will support and protect school personnel and the performance of their duties. J, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrator of Office and will accommodate complaints to public meetings only after fairly an administrative solution.
Okay. So, um, each board member, you have a sheet right here. You can print your name and sign it and date it and then, uh, I guess before close session, just make sure your name is clean. We'll pull five. Um, shall we leave right here? Okay. Next, is there a wish to take this into the public first, a public comment portion B? And is there a second? Maria, all in favor? On, on, any votes, any intentions? Okay. Um, if there are members in the public that wish to speak, we just ask that you keep the first public comments session to two-minute comments and that, uh, they're on agenda items. Um, and, uh, you just say your name and address quicker. Uh, are there any members in the public at this time that wish to speak? Mr. Latt? Time's up. And then we'll, uh, keep the time to two minutes.
Thanks. Arthur's Day, one twenty-five, Louise, and Mary. Uh, I had a moment of memory because I, I might have a chance to review the financial report. It was thirty-five pages, more than thirty-two pages. I wish for most of this, uh, can be answered now or, I didn't, you know, like, uh, an error could prompt the answer. I have two areas of concern really revealing in the first six pages. The first has to do with anticipated revenue, which I notice is substantially lacking, uh, from the federal government for tuition. And I'm not sure, uh, if that is, uh, probably a link listed in running a collect over the short term tuition.
Short form?
Yeah, this is on, short form because, uh, the, it was gonna come in, some people, you know, they're gonna make that. Uh, and also from the federal government, it was short form, quite a bit, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars or more. I forgot what it was. But I had a person that asked how my friend, but I forgot the word, sorry. But that's what I'd like to know. The second, um, question is relates to, um, the reserve, collective reserve, all the reserves. It's a one point two billion, one point one million dollars right now, altogether, all the reserves collected. Um, the only reason I'm raising this is, um, you know, the, the reserve, there's three million dollars in reserve that is used to build the assets, uh, that was accumulated and used, uh, as part of a financial tool to avoid a re-planting of building that tool. Um, I'm concerned when I see a reserve that is, uh, I think reserve is good, we shadow it, never mind. And, um, I'd like to know that, um, what the reserve was this time last year, what the increase is year over year, and how do we get it? And, um, there was something else that put my mind quite a bit off, so I'll say next.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any other members in the public that wish to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, uh, is there motion to take the session to regular course of speech? Maria, is there a second? All right, all in favor? Any votes, any intentions? Right. We are now at four o'clock. Are there any members that have any more comments? So our students is on. I, I almost started. I have, I have something interesting to share that I think, I think, I think, I'll actually do it. So, this was what you developed, it says, team?
Yes.
It was Edgewater's, um, projection, their demographic study. And it said that they would have a district total of one thousand eighty-three students. And the breakdown by grade, these are the, the projections for this, are for, for this school. I'll go by this one. Yeah, I have one in case. So, K was one fifty-five, first grade was one sixty-two, second grade was one fifty-seven. I don't want that, I don't remember. Third grade was one, was one thirty, fourth grade was one fifty-seven, fifth grade was one hundred, and sixth grade was one hundred and thirty. That was done in two thousand seventeen, obviously they have twenty twenty-two. And we have the actual numbers of what the students, the student population was. And the actual student population starting in, that's later thing, is in kindergarten, they projected one fifty-six, there's actually one amount. In first grade, they projected one sixty-five, there are ninety students. In secondary, they projected one fifty, there are a hundred and three. In third grade, this one's pretty bad, they projected one forty-two, uh, sorry, they projected one thirty, there are seventy-seven. In fourth grade, they projected one fifty-seven, there's ninety-nine. In fifth grade, they projected one hundred, there's about seventy-five. And in sixth grade, they projected one hundred and three, there's ninety-three. For a total today of six hundred and sixty-nine students when they estimate a thousand eighty-three. So when we're talking about Edgewater and our relationship with Edgewater and the demographic projections in Edgewater, I want to be very clear when I say that the numbers really do not reflect that Edgewater sent us an explosion of growth that this school district can't handle or that this school district, uh, we're not even seeing on our own, in our own town. Right, our own town is, is seeing, uh, turnover and our housing staff. Um, and these numbers just are, are staying flat, or these numbers, the rail numbers are just staying flat. So I encourage people, members of the public, who are, are speaking about our relationship with Edgewater or modifying our relationship with Edgewater somehow, um, to really consider first, what are the actual numbers? What are the facts? And what are the benefits that we get from Edgewater versus the con? And the benefits are overwhelming, I think. Uh, we could not offer the A D classes that we have, the after-school athletic programs that we have. We would lose a lot of money from this school district. Um, so it would be very negative. And I just thought it was really interesting, these numbers, I wanted to share them with everybody. Um, you know, as, as we consider, uh, planning for our, our district's future. And, uh, something we'll, we'll talk about, um, when we do the video updates, Dan is now the Chair of Finance and Planning, but since he's not here tonight, I'll, I'll, I'll chip in, um, and, and share something interesting in what that was considering for funding in terms of capital, uh, projects for the future, uh, consideration of the finance and planning that you is, is considered. But I think it's very interesting. So, um, with that being said, that's, that's all I got on that. Does anyone have other comments to share? No? Interesting stuff, right? Okay. All right. Um, students, you guys have any comments on, on anything? No, okay. All right. Next is the discussion and review of the Leonia School District's COVID-19 quarantine guidelines. So up there is some topic that was proposed, there's also documents right in front of everyone. Now let's go over it, what's, what's being proposed tonight. Um, actually, is there a motion on this to approve this before we decide? Maria, is there a second? On the, on the, look, Mary, time, I'm saying. All right. Then I'll have a discussion. So, first thing is, I, I do want to say that I'm a bit disappointed to find out that, uh, our current quarantine guidelines, I don't believe, are being followed properly, um, for close contact students. Um, and that's why now, especially as the numbers start to drop, it's definitely time to look at this as a board in public and make some changes. So, the quarantine length here that's proposed would be a seven-day quarantine, um, for students, individuals with symptoms, individuals who have tested positive, I want to be clear, that's like a laboratory-tested positive, they definitely have it. And individuals who've been determined to be a close contact of, of someone who's had, who's been tested, uh, who's tested positive for COVID-19. But that can be shortened to five days if, uh, that student can return to school, uh, sorry, that student can return to school at five days if they bring in a negative PCR or negative, uh, rapid antigen test. But those tests must be administered by, uh, a pharmacy or a healthcare provider at home, tests won't be accepted. Um, okay. Oh, that's great. Anything good? Thank you. Um, that's, that's correct. There should be Edward unvaccinated right in between the second line, standard quarantine, uh, COVID-19 and individuals. It should say unvaccinated and individuals. But actually, I think it's gonna, it's gonna be self-explanatory when we talk about the second part here. Uh, but, big question. Um, all right, so then for the second part here, so who's exempt from quarantine? This is, this is what's key. Um, and I think, uh, as our policy committee discussed yesterday, we'll have to relook, reexamine this, um, after March seventh. But right now, these are the people who would be the students and staff, individuals who are in our schools who would be exempt from quarantining. Individuals who may be close contacts but were masked at the time. So if, if both the, uh, person who is exposed, uh, and the person who is infected is wearing a mask at the time of, uh, contact, they won't be quarantined. If you're vaccinated and you have a complete set of vacs, of, uh, vaccine, which means for the pigher, pigher and maderity, you have two shots, the M R N A shot, the M R N A vaccine, you have two shots, and if the Johnson-Johnson, you have one shot, you're not gonna get quarantined. And the Leonia School District would recognize natural immunity. So, seeing that the science suggests that if you've had COVID-19 for the last ninety days, you have really strong immunity to the virus. In fact, one article I just read the other day said that during the Delta wave, people who had natural immunity actually had better protection against, uh, the Delta variant than those who, uh, had the vaccine. Um, so those would be the groups of people who would not be quarantined under these. You got, oh, yeah, a good point there. Um, so in addition to the ninety days though, we would require that, uh, you, that the parents provide the school district with a positive test that was administered by, uh, a healthcare provider or pharmacy, just to show, look, my kid in the last ninety days did have COVID, they're recovered now and, and would have, uh, some degree at least of natural immunity and then would not be quarantined. And the reason I say I think after March seventh, if this board approves, um, the governor's, uh, change in policy on masks is because then, well, we can discuss that in a minute. Let's focus on the, sorry. So, um.
So this will only apply from February ninth to March eighth, like it's other than the top?
Yeah, because we would, I can explain it now. I think that if we approve students to be masked optional, then let's just say hypothetically, there's someone who is unmasked and unvaccinated and they never got COVID yet, but they're in a classroom and someone got COVID, but this student has no symptoms. It, it, I don't, I think there'll be a discussion with the board to say whether or not that makes sense now to quarantine that student. Um, yes, if the board needs that, that's what I can argue. Is there any discussion on, on the proposed guidelines? Yes, yes.
Have a few questions and then can I ask some questions?
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure.
Some discussion, I guess.
Sure.
Um, so for the, for the who is exempt from quarantine, the mask part, that's really talking about unvaccinated students.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I'm sorry, distracted.
Um, for the ma, for the science part where it says students exempt from quarantine masks, that's really talking about the unvaccinated students and that's the category, right?
Yeah.
Um, what, what's our thoughts about lunch when they're unmasked? Is it the same rule as before?
Sorry, can we, let's just fix this before, because I think it's gonna ruin the, uh, the line. Um, do we know which one? Can we hold it? Dan, wait, so, someone figured it out. All right. I think, I think we're settled. Okay. I'm sorry. Can I, I'm very sorry about that.
Okay. Can I have one more?
Let's try this one more time. Kim?
Okay, so I have a, a couple of questions and a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, for masks, that's really unvaccinated students we're talking about because everyone else would fall into the vaccinated category, well, most. And then, so is the rule about?
The antigen category, we call that.
Yeah, the antigen.
They have antigens.
Is the rule about lunch going to remain? Because if they remove their masks for lunch, then they're, they're still determining that, I guess, case by case.
Currently, it is, the elementary school students sit in assigned seats. So you're talking about a small group that would be within three feet. And if they're vaccinated, at that point, they would not be required to quarantine.
The masks, the, the unvaccinated students, are we still going to quarantine?
If they were within three feet, yes, you would have.
Okay, just to clarify.
Yes, that's, yes.
Uh, yeah, so if, 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 if you and I are in contact and, and you had COVID and we were eating lunch together and we didn't have masks on, then we're not masked, so then, yeah, they're.
Right, just to clarify for a moment, because our pre-day students are still all unvaccinated. That might change in a few months, but right now, they're all falling into that category.
Correct.
Um, then I, I just wanted to see if for the natural immunity, is that going to go into their records and just like the vaccinated students are showing up, like it's getting sent, you know, through the?
I don't think, the, the agreement we have with NJIS says that we would get the vaccination of students. I would check, I don't believe, I will ask tomorrow, but I don't believe there's a COVID-positive connection. I can look into that. But right now, as Bryce said earlier, if their parent said that their child was COVID-positive within the last ninety days, they'd have to provide proof of that, so.
Right, and is that in a way some kind of the stone that we could check that?
We certainly could put in, we could put in the nurse's note, sure.
Yeah.
But right now, we don't have anything that connects NJIS with the, uh, Tennessee program that we have, student fat program that we have. But if someone was claiming that their child was positive, they'd improve it. We have a situation recently that the parent wasn't able to prove it, and that student had, was not, had it quarantined.
Right, I just want to make parents aware of that because I think some pediatricians are telling families to get the PCR test to show definitive proof and not, not say, oh, if you got the result on the rapid test, they really want to send them for the PCR. It's to be absolutely clear that that's what it was.
But at this point, the rapid test administered by pharmacy or health official would be acceptable also.
For natural immunity.
Yes, the only thing would not be accepted for almost, for all this, I believe, is a home test because there's no, no proof that you actually took the test, it could be someone in the family, et cetera. So, uh, all these things, either a PCR test or the rapid test would be acceptable. If it was performed by somebody, a professional health provider.
Right, can you use the, the street name? Sorry.
Sorry.
Can you use the name for the, for the people on the street who are listening?
That, that's.
I hope they heard this long.
That's not my dad.
Okay, um, uh, there's something, so, you know, like I went to her school, I have to get, uh, a PCR with every, you know, each other. Uh, and the only pharmacy that went to that, you know, within a day, I did the PCR. And, uh, they send you a PDF, uh, email in, in, in a day. I, I would assume that that would be sent to the school administration, but that's correct. Yeah, to show that I would.
To show, to.
Yeah. Um.
Again, the reason why we're allowing rapid tests is because during the peak especially, it was very challenging to get a result within five days, I don't know, two weeks. So, if it's a rapid test, not by a health professional, or except for that.
Right, I mean, it's not, it's not worth it anymore, but.
But it is not, you know, it could, remember, a month ago, we were in the depths of, of, uh, of, you know, coronavirus where it was very hard to get a test, just a month ago.
Yeah, I understand.
So that's why we decided, oh, PCR, not a test.
I also have the, uh, if you've had COVID in the last ninety days, from my understanding is that if you take a PCR test, you may very well likely test positive even after you've had COVID. So the recommendation is to take a rapid test because that'll only tell you if you're positive, um, while you have the virus, you know, in your system. So, there's definitely a doubt from, from that front. So I have a discussion on, on. All right. Seeing none, roll forward please.
Ms. Albinis?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Ms. De Jesus?
Yes.
Ms. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Wild?
Yes.
President Roberts?
Yes.
And then?
All right, great. I think this is a little long way of keeping kids in school and we'll revisit it on March eighth. Um, and speaking of which, let's talk about the next part of COVID protocols. And that would be, uh, what the governor announced the other day. Uh, on March seventh, uh, he said that the school, the, the power returns to the school district to determine whether or not the school can be masked optional. Um, is there a motion to support this? Mary, is there a second? Maria? There's a discussion. Maria? Uh, you see the one, there's one of those.
Right before I came over, I was reading a list of school districts that have already announced that they're, uh, going to move to mask optional, which I think allows parents who feel that the mask provides some measure of protection to continue that for their children and for teachers, if they'd like to continue with that as well. And then for parents who feel that the mask, uh, maybe the, the harms of the mask outweigh the protection of the mask, then they have that right, especially with the accessibility of vaccines for children five and up. I feel that is, uh, uh, the right move to, to move to that optional. Uh, you know, I think we've seen that, um, masks have definitely provided protection throughout the last two years, but they, that comes at a price, uh, comes at a price for students', uh, social skills, for example, when they can't look at each other's faces or teachers' faces and see whether their jokes are funny or offensive. Or, you know, maybe for students who have trouble with social skills, you tell them, hey, you know, look and, and see how people are responding, you know, to see if they're behaving appropriately. But they can't do that because the people there are speaking with their masks, you know? Um, also for potentially English language learners or students who are hard of hearing and they rely on lip reading and things like that, um, there's challenges there. So, there are, there are many challenges and also some benefits. So I think, uh, we're in a place right now where it's fair, it's all like the parents deciding what, whether their children should, should come to school or mask or not.
I, I agree with Maria about this. Um, I think it should be the parents' decision, but I also think that they should be talking to their children, their students, who are going to be coming to the schools with or without masks. So while the student may be told by their parent to wear the mask in school, if the student elects to take it off, there's not gonna be a list by the teacher that says, uh-uh, Johnny has to have his mask on, Suzie doesn't have to have a mask on. So, if you really want your child to wear the mask, that's a conversation you should have with your own child. Stress the important, your own reasons of why you think it's important they can be wearing one. Um, I also think, I want to stress also that the children and the students should not be calling each other out for wearing or not wearing masks. Everybody has their individual reasons for wanting to do so. And mask changing or whatever kind of words have been being thrown around now, that, I hope that doesn't happen within schools.
Other, other, we're kind of students, you guys are, are welcome to join in the conversation if you'd like as well. Make sure you turn that one. I need to press it for two seconds, three times.
Well, first, if you want to say, I kind of echo what everyone before said about having masks being optional. I think this is kind of the only question I have that may bring specifically to high school, but may bring to also the middle school and the elementary school. Uh, one thing I have noticed that we've had with masks being required is a lot of, uh, kind of designated spots where students can take off their masks to eat. So, if we do go ahead and make masks optional, up to the students. If, I'll speak.
All right. If, um, if we do move to masks optional policy, so a lot of those designated areas will be changed to kind of below any, anyone who's go anywhere to take one sort of, does someone? Every meeting, we're improving slowly with the microphone. It just takes a little while.
It just wants more.
Okay.
Um, how was that my question? I, it will remove kind of those designated areas of the heat.
Yeah, I would think so. Yeah, yeah.
It'd be optional where the, like.
I, I think the goal of all of this is that we really need to start, uh, a return to normalcy. Um, so I would think that having any types of designated areas would prevent that thing from normalcy. And I think now's the time to echo Mary and Maria and, uh, what we were saying is that, uh, now, like, I think, uh, definitely, uh, time, you know, this is not meant, this was never meant to be forever, it's never meant to be, uh, you know, uh, the normal, yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not supposed to be normal. Um, and, uh, yeah, no, I'm definitely happy that the governor made this decision. Um, I hope the board makes, uh, follows in with that decision. And I would also, uh, you know, encourage people to, to look at data of, of, of school districts. There's been a lot of studies of school districts comparing hundreds, not thousands of school districts. And then these, these studies span the globe, right? Other countries have done these studies as well, the United States. Uh, there's, there's really no statistical difference in schools between those where there is mask mandates and those where there weren't mask mandates. And part of that is because, well, at lunch, when you all take the masks off, the whole benefit of the mask goes out the window. I mean, let's just be honest about it. So, quite frankly, I don't think that we should return to these masks unless it gets exponentially, you know, worse someday in the future. Um, and if it gets bad enough where, you know, we can't eat lunch without a mask, if you can eat lunch, we shouldn't be going back to the mask policy, that, that's my opinion. Um, because then really it's not doing anything, it, it follows more of the lines of, of security here. And, and that's one thing I, I've talked about when it comes to many topics, is that I really dislike the idea of, of theater. Uh, and, uh, you know, to the extent that you do provide coverage, I, I think that it's, um, as, as, as Mary and Maria incorrectly said, it's, it's out of the, by the, by the benefits of making it optional. So with that being said, um, I'd also just add, uh, what Mary was saying is that the school district and teachers can't be responsible for the decisions that children make. So I, I, I'm sure some of you have seen in the news, in Virginia, uh, there was a school district that was segregating students based on, well, their decision to mask. I think that's terrible and I don't think that we can do that, especially with the increasing amount of science that suggests that there is one-way protection with masks. So if you're concerned, right, and you want to wear a mask, there's an increasing amount of science that suggests. So if you're concerned, right, and you want to wear a mask, there's an increasing amount of science that suggests, I'm sorry, there's one? There's a, then there's an increasing amount of science that suggests that, well, that the mask will protect you if you want to wear it. And also I think that, you know, as, as human beings, the last thing I'll say, that, that we are not great at risk assessment. You know, we, we tend to think of buying it. Something risky is not risky. We don't think in the sense of, oh, this is thirty percent of a risk for me and twenty-five percent of a risk for you. And, and that is, is proven to be a problem when we're trying to slap on uniform policy for everybody. The risk to a sixth grader or anybody for that matter in our schools is not the same as someone who's sixty-five years old, unvaccinated and overweight. That's just what the science says. The single biggest factor in determining your health outcomes is vaccination status and your weight. If you're overweight, you're going to have a much part of the time, and if you're unvaccinated, you're going to have a much part of the time. If you're older, you're going to have a much part of the time. So I just hope that at the state level, our legislators consider that. And I hope this board considers that. And I hope that we all go in favor of, of going mask optional, starting more of that. One last thing, I'm sorry. I do think that we should continue throughout the reentry process, throughout the COVID guidelines process, we've had a great working relationship with our teachers and our administrators, building administrators, staff, office administrators, and the board. So definitely before March seventh, I'd like to meet, have some board members together, maybe the policy committee, meet with, with some stakeholders in our group, just to hear concerns and to ensure that our policy is developed properly. Because there will be logistical concerns, how teachers should address certain things in the classroom, how administrators should address certain things, and I think that needs to be discussed before March seventh. So that's, that's all I can do. Yeah, Maria?
I want to say something about the
Oh, yeah, do you want to get to that next, or, or do you want?
Do you want to do it now, or do you want to wait till later?
I'm going to do it right after.
Okay.
You were talking about, right, after, right?
Yes.
Yeah, one, one second, yeah.
My question right here too.
Yeah, questions, questions, please. Uh, this, do you have a mic?
Mine, mine, or, uh, this is for, um, this point, is this for now?
Uh, Willie, do you have another mic or?
Should I just shout? All right, I'll pop No, it's more just procedural. Are we going on this tonight?
Well, yeah, because we don't have, I, it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, that's why we were just all like, I did not know this was an agenda tonight, so it just was catching me off guard.
All right, fine. It wasn't the policy committee, the policy committee that we met last night, we were discussing it because the governor announced it yesterday, and, yeah, yesterday, that a lot of people in the community, from what I understand, have been discussing what is Leonia going to do? And since a lot of school districts have already been addressing it, Ridgefield, Bridewood, Wyckoff, et cetera, et cetera. I, I know, hang on. We don't meet until after March seventh, so to address this, unless we wanted to have a special meeting sometime before then, to address it now. And if parents have concerns about the mask policy, they can certainly, you know, voice their concerns to us through the normal channels or through the school building administrators. Yeah.
Can you move it to the next agenda?
Well, the next agenda is not until after it goes into effect, and I'm, I'm sure a lot of parents will have questions on both ways, by the
In this, yes. Two point one, the numbers are certainly going down significantly from where they were a long time ago. And secondly, I think it's important that we advise the parents, whatever the board decides to do. So there's a time period, so there's a transitional period, so the parents can talk to their children. And they can talk, you know, either wear the mask or not wear the mask. Make sure you don't insult the kid that wears a mask or not wear a mask. And I think we can't do that in one day on March eight, we need to March nine. And I think there's going to be a lot of discussion of where we're going to go with it. And if the board feels comfortable voting for it, as an administrator, preparing the students and the parents and the teachers, I'd rather have you come tonight and put this on the set on and don't vote for it. Or if it's uncertain, you don't vote for it. But I think it's important for me to be able to have the transition period from, from now to March seventh.
Yeah, it certainly came across all quite quickly because just last week, when I was reading about it, the last article was on January twentieth, and Governor Murphy said before the end of the school year. And then it just came out yesterday that he was looking at mask mandates and parents' email. And Christine was saying that in Edgewater in particular, parents were asking about what, what is Leonia doing? So it seems like it's a lot of topic to address.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree.
I apologize for anyone who's
It's a pretty big topic, so I just don't feel great that
Yeah, no, yeah.
No one knew to come to a meeting if they had an issue, but I understand we don't.
Yeah.
I guess the governor didn't think, like, boards have to leave.
Yeah, and Oregon went on on Friday. So, but we did say that we were discussing our COVID guidelines. I know it wasn't in particular with the mask. But I would say it's fair to assume that board meetings coming up with our administration, this announcement, and they're discussing COVID, that it might be discussed.
And I, again, I agree, the fact that we don't have a board meeting before with March, February twenty-second or in spring, or winter break.
Yeah.
So that's why we don't have a meeting today. To have nothing in place, one way or the other, before March seventh
Yeah.
is going to create a lot of controversy, you know.
Yeah, it all makes sense.
But, uh, so I, I, I understand it. I got that Monday morning, and I was surprised because I, I didn't hear from the governor, heard from the TV news station. I said, Governor Murphy, I just heard the day before, I'm meeting the press, and we didn't say it on Sunday. And on Monday morning, they were announcing that it's going to happen. And then I'll see if I can adjust it, uh, thirty-six hours. So I think it's important for us to, if, if you feel comfortable, the board feels comfortable, to make the decision tonight so I can lead the way and make sure that there's not controversy come March seventh.
I mean, I kind of feel like I'm the only one who might be uncomfortable with this right now. I guess it just seems a little rough because it's a pretty big topic. And we just kind of decided on the new quarantine guidelines. I respectfully had to agree with a lot of what's being said about the masks in particular. I have concerns about the ACS population because still the three K students are not vaccinated, they don't have access to a vaccine. I was, you know, I was kind of really hoping that we would enable the mask policy until they had access to the vaccine. In addition, I wasn't aware that parents were viewing the masks so negatively. I feel like they've cut us in school, they've cut a lot of our students very deep. And then with this updated quarantine guidelines, if we move to, you know, unmasking our students, then anyone unvaccinated might have a greater chance of being vaccinated.
Well, that, that is one, I think, that quarantine guidelines will be reevaluated after. And I think we should discuss whether or not asymptomatic individuals, and, and what I mean by that is individuals who not tested positive for COVID, or we don't, they don't know if they have COVID, but have no symptoms of COVID, whether they should be vaccinated. Because right now, under our current guidelines, not the ones we just approved, the ones that have been in place, whether or not you're asymptomatic, you just didn't have a mask on, and you were in close contact, you're getting vaccinated.
Next.
So.
I have a, I have a separate statement, which, and that's the, you know, in this moment. So step back, we don't need to rush the discussion of the mask at this time though, because we have time. And also the, throughout the, um, the last, last, uh, the couple of weeks, it's going to be like, there's a lot of different, there's a lot of developments happening. So I'll just sort of wait for, um, for the discussion about mask to be, like, next meeting. Because it, it, it doesn't really necessarily feel like, you know, rushed to, as I was just saying, also, but we don't need to rush it, uh, to discuss it right now.
Well, but, uh, here's, here's my thought. I, I understand. But what we're, what we're then saying is instead of approving going mask optional on March seventh, it would be for March nine.
It's, it's just two days. It's not going to make too much difference.
But I think, yeah, it was talking about how
Yeah.
There's going to be, there's going to be dissent on it. Parents are going to dissent on it. Teachers are going to dissent, some students might dissent. Some are going to, I would imagine a lot will approve. But have giving the administrators the time to say, to develop a proper, proper policy.
Yeah, I, here's a couple of what he says there. It's, uh, the, uh, it is, it's, it's better to say that it is currently solely, um, the board decision by the district. So until we really approve, really change in policies, uh, the, the Leonia district, uh, the mask will be required in the classroom. Until we visit this meeting, which is at the ninth, so we are going to, uh, we have to wear masks at the ninth. And, and then, that, that's plausible, and that's what exactly, uh, Governor Murphy specified. That they're going to, you know, lead it to the district. So, uh, whatever, uh, until next meeting, so that, um, the, uh, whatever mask will be required. And then, yeah, and after that, I think we'll be discussing whether we make it as required for now. That, that's what we'll, so we'll, so we'll, the board decision on that day. So in two days, it doesn't really make huge difference, I think. And also the, there's a, like, uh, the, uh, couple of several districts that they are the movement about, they are, they're still kicking the, uh, mask. And all this happening, it's going to be all the story will be developed next, uh, the couple of weeks. So let's see how it goes. And also the other mask, uh, yes, um, as you mentioned that mask, uh, probably, we're not sure whether mask is a protective mask or not. However, mask is about curse. Mask is not for yourself. Mask, or mask is for others. So that, like, probably over there. And whether you have, um, maybe it doesn't protect, uh, you from, to protect yourself. However, if you're, um, the wearing mask, it will just curse into, like, you know, whatever germ or whatever is spreading, is spreading, uh, is germinated into others. It, it, it definitely does, like, definitely does, uh, affect it. For example, like, you know, after when people wear the mask, that there's a very low rate of, of moving on that. So, um, yeah, it, it, and, and it, it is impacted. And it, it, it's, it's, it's like, hard to say that, it's like, completely, completely, completely useless.
No, I'm not saying it. I want to
I understand, and you want, like, the, I like to just, like, you know, uh, people, they're aware of it, just like, not wearing masks, uh, just to be like, uh, most of their, uh, wearing mask. It doesn't mean that, like, you know, don't wear it. It means that it's up to you, it's your, your choice. Because you want to protect yourself.
No, I
And it's
Well, you just Yeah, that is, um, that is everywhere.
Well, we're working, right?
Yeah.
Is it working? Um, me personally, um, I, I am, um, I agree with these two board members. Um, but I also hear, um, Ms. Melvin and Mr. Park, I don't feel comfortable pushing it through if there are members who are not feeling ready, unless it is inevitable, right? So on that point, I'm okay waiting. But I don't want to wait, like, just, um, I know some focus clients while we wait. Instead of just, you know, wait until the next meeting and see what happens. Like, what would you do like that? We want to gather some input.
Actually, the, uh, the, uh, the, the post committee will have the, uh, plan to, uh, discuss about this meeting. And regarding this mask policy, we are ready for it too.
Yeah.
So we are planning to have a meeting on, uh, what was it, March second?
Okay.
But
The committee, yes, the political.
Yeah, I, I think this is important for the, the committee to hear what we plan to do while we wait. Um, so we are planning on policy committee meeting to reach March second.
Yes, yes. So, so basically, what I'm going to do is that even though it's a committee meeting, I'm going to, uh, extend this, um, the invitation to all, all members.
Well, we can do it. That'd be a one.
Okay, that's all right.
That'd be, that's work.
Okay.
No, no, but what I would do is different time.
Okay, yeah, somebody else
Yeah, and also, uh, I think in honestly, it's important point that I, in honesty, didn't really think about. Even if it's a small population, there is a student population who's not even manageable to be vaccinated. I think it's important for us to recognize that fact. So I trust that the policy committee will handle that while we think through these, you know, the concerns and the term of judgment.
Well, I
That, that, those are the key comments you're making this morning tomorrow.
All right, I have another question, and I don't know, it might also be procedural, but I'm just, because my own school district where I work, like, we just got a email today saying, because the governor in New Jersey lifted the mask mandate, that it will expire in our school district as well on March seventh. Because the school district was following the state mask mandate. The state mask mandate is expiring, so it's expiring for all schools. So my question is, is Leonia's policy now expiring on March seventh? And if we want a mask policy for Leonia only, then we enact one? Or are we, like, so I, like, I guess my question is more for a bit, like, are we voting? So everybody who was wearing masks in school, although New Jersey, because it was required.
But I think normally
The state Yeah.
Our local policy, we don't wear masks.
But that, but this is because of the state mandate.
Well, we use that as our excuse, because it's difficult to understand that, but, you know.
But that's, um, my question is, because our superintendent, our board hasn't met since the
I'm saying, are we
Our superintendent just announced, so they haven't, their board hasn't met either. So I feel like we're having this discussion of the board.
The reentry plan that we approved said that, that we voted on, that there'd be masks.
No, I know that everybody's planned that that's, that they've acquired.
Yeah, but our plan still said that, so I don't think, I think Chris was wrong.
Well, I'm not going to go as far as to say if we were right or wrong, but I will say
Well, I guess my question was more, do we just say, okay, it's expiring March seventh, and we're going to decide at the next meeting if we reenact a mask policy?
Which is extended by the one day?
Well, Well, I, I, yeah. Here, here's what I think, though. The, when we say that we should develop a plan, there's no plan coming. It's just to say that masks are optional, you can wear one or not. And that's the, that's the bottom line. Like, there's not going to be a plan. Like, I'm not sure what a plan would look like even. Other than if you want to wear a mask, God bless, and if you don't, God bless. And it's, it, that's, that's
I think it sounds like you need time to prepare the administrators, teachers, and parents to, for what's been up.
Yeah, a very good call. I, I did say earlier that if the board feels comfortable, I think it would be helpful to, however, if there's enough of the board who's actually uncomfortable, we'd have to go to Plan B and, and not do that. I, I do think, Maureen, as far as that, the board approved the reentry plan, so no matter what other districts say, I think we have a plan that we did base on the governor's mandate, but that is our plan. So I don't, I think we have to vote to remove our reentry plan about mask wearing, because right now, we say mask mandate, and we use the governor as our support and our defense. But I don't think, I think, I don't disagree with the rest.
Yeah. It has a certain Oh, it has a certain, I definitely agree that you need a way to some session. There are going to be a lot of questions asked by students, by families. And as an administrator, I, I definitely know where you are. I think we have been with masks for a long time, and I agree with the committee that I've said, that is really, uh, we have to try our best to go back to normalcy. I, I would keep my thoughts on that. But then if it's optional, it's optional, right? I think of what, uh, Mary said, is making sure that students are not being taken on, they don't get off of a mask. Right? But those are the conversations that we have with from now also, right, because that's on, just, just here, right? So you need that. Same one day, or mask today, and mask tomorrow, is not what I work in school. And you need to definitely try activating, you know, parents and, and students to live in your policy.
Mary, I, I apologize, I closed my
To Isaac's comment about, you know, wearing masks as a courtesy to others, I think that really applied more when the pandemic was raging and numbers were higher. I could see that, like, I prefer not to wear a mask when I'm out, but I put it on when I go in stores because I know that other, these other people feel comfortable, even though the numbers right now are not large. But, so I get the whole courtesy thing, but if numbers are not there, and our students are relatively healthy, especially in the high school area, when, I'm sure these guys, you're like, you know, you're complying with what people should have to do, it's a state mandated thing, but you kind of want to take that mask and, like, just be like normal for God's sakes, you know, and just have a conversation, see somebody laugh, and make a smirk or remark or something, and, and just, just, you know, be, be them again, be teenagers again. And, and for the, for ACS, I think that is something that we need to discuss probably at the next meeting. Do we, you know, what kind of conception should we make, or do we have to make for the preschoolers or the other kids who aren't vaccinated and don't have a choice? I think the parents probably feel very pressured and very protective about their status, and we need to be, like, very sensitive to that too.
I just wanted to step also way in on the, uh, pre-K, uh, they be brought up and can brought up, from at least my experience, when my son was in pre-K, those students didn't really interact, those students outside of pre-K, they eat lunch in their classroom, right, and they don't really, like, interact with the rest of, of the student body, so I don't see really how making masks wearing optional for A C S students would, would really, you know, harm, harm those students if they're all eating lunch in their classroom while not wearing their mask. So I just wanted to kinda add that, and, you're right, the numbers are down, you know, and, you know, as somebody who got vaccinated, got boosted, wore a mask, never died inside, and still had a breakthrough over a crowd infection, you know, I just feel that the masks at this point are just doing more harm than good.
I'd also just add that, you know, and more and more people are saying now that we're not gonna get the COVID zero ever, like, never, I mean, just the status quo, for example, uh, when it, when it occurred in nineteen ninety, the last case wasn't until nineteen fifty-seven, so, I mean, I think that COVID's gonna be around for a very long time, our schools are gonna deal with it for a very long time, um, and I think, however, that we, you know, right now, we have vaccines that are very effective, we have booster shots that are very effective, um, and, you know, if you want them, you should go get them, you have the time certainly to do so, um, a lot of, a huge portion of our teachers, ninety-something, ninety-five percent, am I right in that? Ninety-five percent are vaccinated amongst high schoolers, it's in the seventies, and the other schools, a little bit lower, it's in, I think, like, what, the sixties in middle school, and like forties.
It's higher in high school, lower, about fifteen in high.
Fifties, yes, okay, so that's half the school there. Um, there's, a lot of students probably have some degree of natural immunity if they had it, but also, if, if there's nothing else that we have, we have the knowledge of how this virus is interacting in the world and with, with students, we know that the younger you are, for whatever reason, whatever science works, it's not impacting you in the same way that it's gonna impact someone who's older, so I think that when we're making risk calculations, you know, for preschool, for example, and, and as Maria, I think correctly points out, you know, they're pretty isolated, uh, that's probably one of the safest groups you can be in, um, you know, that, just because of the state of their age and their isolation in the building, um, okay, I agree with you. Is there any other conversation? Please feel free, free to, I think it's, go to the public when there's open dialogue, issues we don't agree with.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
A simple question. Do you have? If you, do you, do you, um, uh, the COVID pandemic cases are close contact quarantine within pre-K groups over the past few years?
Pre-K, pre-K's probably the largest group to be quarantined, as we know. I, COVID first, because of the fact that we're unvaccinated.
Right. I don't know if they were can, but that's probably part of.
And also, and also, pre-K kids, it's hard for them to stay away from each other, you know, it's their.
But it, but, but, but put it in perspective, though, how many kids are quarantined right? There's like ten kids, and like, there's twenty kids at most.
As I said earlier, our numbers are significantly down, so, but, but, but Tommy's question was about pre-Kable, that's two years.
No, no, I know, but when you're saying the largest, that could mean everybody, or that could mean five people, and if the, you know, that, that, that could be, I just wanna be very clear about this.
My question was, if you understood my question correctly, I was only focusing on the group that is not eligible for vaccination, I just wanted to have a feel for it.
Over the past two, over the past two years or this week?
Past two weeks, and, um, maybe, well, on the front, it's still, like, very high this recently, so that's the past two years.
Past two years.
The entire duration.
The pre-K were, were more likely to be quarantined than anybody else, because.
Because of our.
Because of what I just said, they're close together, the masks.
And they're not, and they don't have any exemption other than masks, right? You know, they're not vaccinated, they don't have, not like we are not, we're in the, you know, we're staying on some family members. And they worry their masks on the.
Pre-K kids are three and four years old, so.
It's, it's awful, for sure, but, but, you know, the group that we, we can't, because I think we're all seeing the same thing, Mary's saying the same thing, you, you have to visit that and see what, what makes sense.
And the fact that pre-K kids can't get vaccinated makes those numbers to be high, because if you're a close contact and you're vaccinated, you are not quarantined, so, if a pre-K kid's not vaccinated, they may be quarantined, unlike a third, fourth grader that has the vaccine, even though if they're vaccinated and first contact, they do not get quarantined, case you want.
And, and I'm not suggesting that we have to base our, our policy, masking policy, based on this whole, we're just trying to understand, um, how we can better understand that, you know, to, you know, set the, the policy that protects everybody and, you know, with the best benefit of the benefit. So, thanks.
Can I, um, do we have the numbers for A C S, for how many students are vaccinated?
Uh, it's, uh, two weeks goes fifty percent, so I would say maybe fifty-five percent right now.
Okay.
Because we did have a vaccination survey today, and there's a number of the only students there.
I guess that's also part of my hesitation, is I understand that teachers have a very high vaccination rate in the high school as well, um, the middle schools does too, if I, I was kind of hoping that A C S would touch up with their vaccination rate before we, you know, change our mask policy, and, right, I think we're disagreeing on this, but I did read two studies today from the New York Times, that said that there was a much lower rate of transmission and infection in schools where the students wore masks, so, just to put that out there, um.
All right. I have just one more question, I don't know, is there any way we could, um, just because of the separate workbook on the agenda, like, maybe, I understand that it's important to voting tonight because of the time period, um, but could be vote after the next round of public comments, just to, to you members of the public better here.
No, I have, I have no, no issue with that. It, um, I should probably, I mean, because, you're, you're. Well, you can, um, yeah, you would just, you would table it until later in the meeting. Is there, is there a motion on that? The table isn't filled after public? Well, do we make that discussion after, after discussion's finished?
Right.
Yeah, after discussion's finished, somebody made a motion. So we'll make that motion, it just wants discussion. No, essentially, it's.
Yeah, either, either way.
Um, I'm sorry, uh, uh, who is, Kim, were you finished? I'm, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, is there other discussion? I, I also think that, you know, we're also at a point where, we've had a long, students have had a long time to get vaccinated at this point, and I don't, I think we're getting to a point where the people who are gonna get vaccinated, whose parents would let them get vaccinated, who want to get vaccinated, they're vaccinated, and the only people who are really increasing vaccinations right now are people getting boosted, uh, that's just my sentiment, I don't think that someone who said, I'm not getting vaccinated, you know, a month ago, is now gonna get vaccinated tomorrow, I just don't think that that's really, we're at that state, like, I, I don't think, I think the growth in vaccinations is definitely, you know, leveling off if it's not done so already, so, you know, I don't think we're ever gonna get to, uh, hundred percent vaccination rate in our school district unless we mandate it, and, uh, I'm not, we're not talking about it at this point, and I don't think anybody was, was in this area, bottom of the, um, so, that's, that's where I just want to follow on that. So, uh, there was a motion, there was already a motion, and, and, since second, right?
Motion to table.
No, I'm sorry, it's, it's, the discussions, I'm sure, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, you have the second.
Sorry. I take that. I'm not saying completations.
Are you asking about athletes?
No.
No? Okay.
Yeah.
No worries, no worries.
Okay. Um, I just had a quick question, I completely shift the subject, but does the board have any plans on how we avoid already identified mask payments? We don't point that, but I definitely think we should. Um, but, is there going to be need with the staff? Because I think it's a very prevalent concern at the height of school, especially with the amount of H I V report that we've been witnessing and experiencing, um, so I was just wondering if there are any steps or, uh, leak things, so.
One thing that we discussed yesterday in policy, and I'll answer how we'll deal with it, like, whether it's student to student, teacher to student, teacher, but student to teacher, no one should be sa, if, you know, if and when we are mask optional, no one should say, you know, you should wear a mask, you shouldn't wear a mask, you know, you look silly, you know, you know, obviously, that, that, all right? There should be no conversation about someone's decision to wear a face cover. That's purely up to, you know, the individual, because each individual has different health needs and different health, you know, uh, issues or non-issues, and the home situation, family situation, maybe you have someone at home that you have, actually, you want to be, you have to cough it for, um, and that, that's, you know, each individual's business, so, when we do go to, um, mask optional, that definitely needs to be part of the conversation, but I'll, I'll, we're gonna need to talk about hospital aggressive.
Again, I, I just wanna keep repeating myself, if the board does feel comfortable tonight, it would be better, uh, for us to be able to talk about it for, for the next three weeks or weeks, to get people into that situation. However, if the board doesn't feel comfortable passing tonight, and doesn't pass it until March night, we're gonna have to do a quick, quick transition period when that happens, so let's see what happens tonight. And again, I, 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 I'm conservative, my views on masking, if Chris knows, uh, and whatever the board comes up with tonight, but I do understand both sides, and that's why the debate on masking has been ongoing for, for two years, and, and there's, everyone is making accurate statements, it's just a, the way you're going to vote, so let's go decide how I handle it, a long-term transition period or a short, an intense transition period? That'll be a decision, I, well, a decision, that'll be something I'll have to take care of once the vote is taken tonight.
Also, in terms, in terms of meeting with the different groups, uh, L E A, L A S A, you know, we, 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 I wanna hear their concerns, like, I think the board should hear their concerns about how we, you know, go forward, like, a- as I said at the outset, this was never meant to be the norm, and as we see many districts around us making this call yesterday, um, I, I, I know we're gonna definitely take heed from the calm, I'm sure, that, oh, this was wrong, the board did this in secrecy, or, you know, the, the standard critiques that we all can get, but sometimes these things come before us, and I think parents deserve, like, answers from their board, uh, or their school district, and, and the administration definitely deserves its time to address it. All right, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so there's a motion to table until after.
Motion to table.
Until after public, the second public.
Second public.
Is there, is there a second? Noreen, all in favor? Any votes, any sanctions? Okay, all right, next. Um, so, one last thing, um, Mary, would you like to bring it up about the, uh, the other?
Sure. Since we're talking about masking and unmasking, I have very strong feelings about our student athletes, particularly in the high school. Um, I think they've been really compliant to wearing their mask, because that's what Dr. Berlino and we wanted them to do, for their own safety and the safety of their other student participants, but I would strongly urge everybody to say, can we just get rid of the masks on our student athletes in the high school now, so that they can really enjoy being competitive and playing their sport? The mask-wearing, enduring any kind of aerobic or cardiac, or any kind of activity that they're doing, really inhibits their performance, I feel, uh, and it gives them a disadvantage, I think, when they're trying to compete at their best. Um, you know, and when they share emotions on the playing field, they're making eye contact, they can't see the whole person's face, if they're playing soccer, you're seeing only eyes, how do you communicate with just your eyes on a playing field like that? You have to see the whole face. So I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I would strongly recommend that we make that mask optional for our student athletes at the high school beginning to, you know, tomorrow.
Is there a motion? Uh-huh. Motion, is there a second? Second, Anna, discussion. I would.
Oh, hi, hi.
And Noreen, would you like to go, you can go first.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, I'm gonna go first, just, um.
Yeah, please.
So I, I do regret saying, um, Mary, uh, my son's actually a three season athlete, athletic school, um, I'm just wondering, the move to remove the mask for the student athlete, is that coming from the athlete, from the coaches, and the students that were carrying it, or is that just something we're putting forward? I, I don't hear that, maybe, um, maybe my kid doesn't talk a lot, but I haven't heard substantial pushback from the teams, the coaches, the players, um, so I don't know, I just, I think, if, if we're hearing that, then I'd say, yeah, let's, let's talk about it tonight, but otherwise, it's third date, or we're talking about removing masks, so.
I, I don't.
I, I'm just, I just wanted to know where, where it's coming from.
So I don't, I don't think there has been, uh, I, I don't know, I haven't heard, but we are the only school aside from, um, Lloyd, Lloyd Enwood, that does mask their athletes. No other schools, even the schools that we compete against, they're not masked, so we have students that are, you know, I don't, I, yeah, so, so just to be clear from public news, Tom, you know, right now, we have our athletes masked, and you have athletes from other schools who are unmasked, and even at the professional level, I, I, I watch basketball, I think it's a little ridiculous, but you have, like, the players on the sidelines are wearing masks, so then when they go play, there's no mask, and when you're huffing and puffing on the field, jumping all over each other, you'd think that maybe that would be, but, no, so, uh, right now, we're doing the opposite, uh, we're masking our players while they're on the court, and while they're off the court, um, and what we're really talking about is just basketball and bowling, right? Because, uh, what, what is, what is.
Swimming in the pool.
Swimming in the pool, and what's.
Wrestling.
Wrestling, they're not masked currently. Currently, our athletes are not masked, except for wrestling. So we're really talking about basketball, and we're talking about bowling, uh, and we would obviously, for all sports, even when we're mask optional, you know, on, on March seventh, it does what we choose to do, we still follow the venue's rules, so if, uh, you know, older cities, that is, you gotta wear a mask, of course.
I, I just, yeah, I just would add, I just wanna know where it's coming from, because there's probably other student groups, theater, or whatever, that are wearing masks, maybe feel it's hard to do that, but still.
So under current law, the only groups that can be unmasked right now, uh, are those who have mental condition, athletes who are, you know, doing athletics, and in gym class that are doing strenuous activity. Now, under our current reentry policy, our, our gym class, we, we decided to make them masked, now, that, 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 that might be cause confusion if we had one period of the day where students were unmasked, but you can argue, you know, well, they go eat lunch, they're unmasked as well, so, uh, but, keeping that aside, those are the three times when you can be unmasked, and that's the current N G A D O A guidelines, uh, and that, that's, that's what we're.
So, I'm sorry, just to add one thing, and I agree, for me, I don't, I would prefer they not wear masks playing sports, um, I'm, I'm sure my son would too, but, um, they have, I haven't heard issues with, I guess, if we're gonna say number one, and number two, this is not on the agenda, is it? So again, I feel like, I, I don't, you know, we have to kind of vote on, the governor put us in a position where we sort of have to vote on something that we didn't think the public were in advance.
Yeah.
So I don't feel like, I just don't feel like it's the right timing to do it, I guess, that's, that's my opinion.
Noreen, can I answer your question?
Yeah.
I, I, all of the, and I'm sure the athletes are, to their choice, they're not wearing masks, uh, we're not getting, um, and see, a lot of the electric would certainly prefer students not wearing masks, however, uh, again, not, not to, uh, go against what Mary's saying, but we did win many championships last year with masks on, we've done all the shared athletic group with masks on, our students, pretty, uh, when we did it last year, uh, it just got used to it, so it's not where, it's a big deal to them. If they had a preference, of course they wouldn't wear masks, no one would wear masks if they had a preference, we were sitting here tonight, and we wouldn't want to wear masks. Uh, there's a situation this year with our girls' basketball team, which I relayed last time in our policy meeting, that one of our student athletes was positive, one of our female basketball players was positive, but since the team was masked, we didn't have to shut the team down, we continued to play. So my word would be, if, if we can, we have a couple more weeks of season, and how many games of freshman have left already?
Three, four, five.
Yeah, four, five, it's not long. I'd rather not shut the season down, it'd be towards the end of the season, or even into playoffs, if we qualify to the playoffs, because we're not wearing masks. We've survived masks for the entire winter, um, when we were hit with it early on, we put the mask rule back into effect this year, and it's been effective, because the purpose of the mask rule was to continue to play. We've not had any teams shut down, have to put the masks back on. We definitely shut down freshman basketball team, I believe, and definitely our girls' basketball, varsity girls' basketball team. So if you asked our players, it'd probably be unanimous, they don't wanna wear masks. However, the same policy be effective between, uh, surveying our students at school and, and many of our teachers. However, the same policy being effective between, uh, surveying our students at school and, and many of our teachers. But it's kept our kids on the court, and they're used to it. I, I've not heard one student athlete complain in this calendar. Uh, actually, one student, I think, September of, May, uh, twenty twenty complained about the soccer team being masked. And he just told me, yeah, the mask's not in the ward. And since then, we've not had complaints from, uh, the students, the coaches, uh, or business products. Again, they prefer not to wear, but we've kept the season going. We're trying to have two more weeks to have four weeks of season.
Right, yeah.
Um, yeah, just to have a little more discourse, I just, Mary, I understand your point. Um, I just wanted to say I agree with Norrie, um, and things about the conservation of L H S, like, how did the theater team respond, how would the other groups respond? I think it might be a little uneven if you said, let's unmask the athletes immediately and then give that first, like, option to the other students. Also, uh, I do have concerns because bowling and basketball are indoors, so it's not like they're outside and unmasked, they would still be indoors and unmasked. Um, and I do think, I understand it's very hard for the athletes, but I do think that, look, we're not asking them to wear an N ninety-five mask, they feel lighter cervical mask. Um, what was I, one more point, right around. I do think it feels a little bit rushed, and, you know, if we're gonna be talking about this on March second or seventh, then we might as well just do it all at the same time.
So, speaking from personal experience, I've involved in the gear workout at our school. There's a lot of aerobic activity and, uh, there could be rules that we didn't have to wear masks during our performances. And tying back to last fall, on this previous fall, um, at my first soccer while they're masked, and it was still so hard to play, like, you're standing, like, you're huffing and puffing, but you're under a mask and under the sun and with the warm weather approaching, like, I really feel this is gonna be another big concern again, masking, like.
Yeah, I told you about the screen, tell me what you have covered.
Well, I, I, I'm just, uh, the, the, Dr. Burdewiny, I, I do disagree with you on, on the fact that masks were the difference between our athletes playing or not playing. I think that was our policy made that differential, but I don't know if statistically, the actual virus, did that make a difference? And I'm not saying that masks won't do anything, what I'm saying is that quarantine our team was a decision, you know, if they had masks on, we didn't quarantine, if they didn't have masks on, we did quarantine. But that was our decision. That doesn't mean that more kids got COVID, and we're not seeing that in other kids, are we? Are we seeing that more teams are dropping out? I mean.
Yes, you do. Yeah, we had a lot of things.
So what are your conclusions? Dr. Burdewiny, do you want to?
I'm just, my only point was, no, that's not correct, and it's, the teams have dropped. And Norrie said, your son said games canceled because of COVID. And, and as a result, we have not, now, again, it's not our policy, the policy of, that we follow, that is, that is, you are unmasked and you're in close contact, and you're vaccinated, you don't, you quarantine, that's the rule.
Something that's our policy.
That's our policy across the board, not only just the only.
Athletic, athletic.
Don't feel for anything.
No, no, I'm talking about for athletics. Our policy has been that if you're an athlete and you're unmasked, and you're around someone that has COVID, and you're unmasked, you're, you're gonna get quarantined.
That's for a music kid, an athlete, a, a kid in chemistry class, it's just the policy, not just the only.
It's sort of like, we're seeing, that, that's sort of like a lower, uh, division for, uh, well, what we're crossing, like, it's not really like our, it's not, and then probably it's gonna be discussed, probably, and discuss, like, you know, all I want. Uh, can we just, let me be, uh, just go through the ladder, because then, uh, this is like someone like, you know, the public, uh, there, like, we should forward, you know, when it's something, I don't know, I don't, that stuff, so.
Sorry, there was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let, 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 let's proceed, and then whether it be discussed or not, like, we, uh, so, let, let, let's push through all the levels.
I, I, I just want to be clear, is, is there a motion to table it? Like, are we tableing it until a certain time? Is that what you're, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
So is, is there a second on, well, what do you want to, do you want to discuss it after the public comment? The other, or, because let's be, let's be clear, this is the last time we can discuss it as a board. Unless we have a special meeting for the athletic season for the current half.
Okay, let, let, let's, let's give it, because, like, right now, we should, like, go to, uh, the, the, the stuff.
Sure. Is there, is there a second on, on the motion table? On favor? Any opposed, any tensions? All right, so next, we'll move on to. All right, Lord, thank you for a very lively discussion, and I think, I appreciate our ability to have a very cordial discourse. Some boards are not able to do that, some governing bodies aren't able to do that, I think it's very good that we can.
All right.
With that being said, uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items? So that the items are the answers. Uh, Mary, is there a second? Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Albanese.
Yes.
Ms. Troy.
Yes.
Ms. DeJesus.
Yes.
Ms. Melman.
Yes.
Mr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yeah.
Ms. Wildes.
Yes.
President Robbins.
Yes.
Uh, next move on, hit reports.
There were two hit reports, and, uh, I'm sorry. There were two hit reports, and both of them, uh, was determined by our hit specialist, uh, that it is not a hit, it was a co, a code of conduct. Again, as you know, that there's two, uh, criteria for it to be a hit. One, it has to have an impact, or some significant impact on the school day, and it has to be specific class. So both incidents, uh, both criteria were not met. However, again, the code of conduct is, is still consequences for their actions.
Uh, we're gonna go around to a miniature report.
There's no one hit reports? I think.
Uh, are these, let me ask this question, are these reports that were previously reported to the board now were affirmative? Or they haven't, like, have the parents been notified they have the right to appeal again?
Yes.
They have?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, you would vote on those to affirm.
Do that, do that.
Uh, you could do that as all favor. I'm literally, yeah, well, you know, let's do a roll call just in case, but I'm not.
Uh, roll call please. So we get a motion. Oh, sorry, is there a motion? Are you, is there a second, Hannah? Roll call please.
Ms. Albanese.
Yes.
Ms. Troy.
Yes.
Ms. DeJesus.
Yes.
Ms. Melman.
Yes.
Mr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Wildes.
Yes.
President Robbins.
Yes.
Yes.
And keep the mic, we're gonna go to.
Okay.
That was the contention.
Oh, that wasn't a contention, I'm.
Yes. Okay. Just a few points, one, uh, tonight, as I said earlier, we, uh, hosted at the high school another vaccination center, and, uh, over a hundred, um, mostly between the ages of five and eleven, got vaccinated for a second time. Uh, we did have some adults there, uh, and mostly, uh, people that participated today, students that participated today, were from Edgewater Leona, so it was good that we offered an opportunity for our students and their, uh, community members to get vaccinated. Um, also, I'm here with the vice principal of the high school, is having a Title I meeting, uh, on Thursday for high school parents of eligible students, and that's being funded through Title I. And Dr. Karen Models and Mrs. Sinander have worked on that as an allowance program for our Title I parents. So we're very, um, happy with that, and hopeful that we'll have a return on Thursday. As all of you know, we have power outage on Thursday, rolled into Friday. Uh, the, um, Mark and Bryce will, we'll detail this in a minute, but, uh, I was notified four thirty Friday morning that we had no, we had no, uh, nothing, we had nothing, and we had to make a decision very quickly. And, and Bryce will go with it in a moment. Uh, we have good news about our remind, uh, information center, we're, we're testing it out, Tommy and I have set it up. Hopefully it's gonna work, uh, if an individual is not English-speaking, and when I send their mind out, or one of the building principals sends their mind out, there is a, a new, um, dropdown where they can pick the language that's sent in. So if you're Arabic-speaking, uh, I send a reminder, obviously I don't, uh, speak Arabic or write Arabic, and you can get that, someone to Google Translate. So, um, we're gonna get, once we test it out and it works, uh, it's twenty-four hours, so probably not, next time I send out a reminder, we'll definitely get that in Korea. Uh, we talked about masks, our COVID guidelines, and Bryce will update, uh, tonight regarding the school calendar. There's two topics on the school calendar Bryce plans to talk about. Otherwise, we had a really big number the last two weeks, uh, in COVID numbers, very few, very few people. Uh, we don't believe any teachers right now are quarantined, we're pretty sure there are no teachers being quarantined right now. The number of students is below twenty, so we're very happy compared to January, the first two weeks of January, that was the holidays. It was very, very challenging to make sure we had school, which we did. And now, we have more subs, thank you to the board for raising the price. We have subs that show up, uh, so we are, uh, not paying a lot of, uh, uh, extra periods to the teachers, because we have the subs covering classes, we're not overwhelming the teachers covering classes when they should be doing prep work. So we're very happy the way we are right now with our members on record to COVID. That's all afternoon.
Uh, good evening, everyone, I have two items to discuss to the public and to the board. The first item relates to insurance coverage, um, trying to, uh, confirm the insurance coverage relating to the three complaints that were filed against the district. Um, internally, we couldn't confirm it through administration, so as a result, the district had retained an insurance archaeologist to perform and, and do an in, intensive review, um, through our records to confirm the insurance coverage during the period relating to the three complaints. Um, due to the amount being below the threshold, um, there isn't a formal board resolution on tonight's agenda. Um, so that's why you haven't seen it on there, because the amount was below the bid threshold. Um, the insurance archaeologist has started the process, and I will keep everyone up to date on the results. Um, hopefully, the district will be successful in identifying the insurance coverage, which will, you know, alleviate expenses such as legal fees. The second item relates to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget update. Just to give everyone an update, uh, where we stand with the, with the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. We are on schedule relating to the tentative budget that's been posted on the district website. Uh, the district's currently in the process of completing, completing the budget workbook, uh, which basically is, is putting all the financial projections, salaries, um, you know, tuition rates, health benefits, um, all those supply lines, um, the various department, um, budget information. Um, so, at this point, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget workbook recap will be presented to the finance and planning committee, um, scheduled for February seventeenth. Um, however, certain final figures which will affect the twenty-two, twenty-three budget has not been released yet by the state and also other, um, other L V As, such as stating numbers, tuition rates. Uh, also, this year, there's a chapter forty-four tax levy adjustment, which is, um, what the state is doing is the savings that chapter forty-four brought on, um, relating to all districts, they're kind of, uh, putting it to what they call, like, a, I guess, like, a tax, uh, tax levy, uh, advocacy, um, adjustment. So once those numbers come out, it's anticipated they'll, they'll be out, uh, by the twenty-fourth of February by the state. And, and that's it. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you. All right, next, we're going to review reports, and we'll start off with education.
Um, our first meeting, living today, is next Tuesday, so we'll update next week.
Perfect. Um, Dan. Dan's not here tonight, but I'll cover for him on time as you're saying. Um, we really reviewed a few things, um, Tommy hung me out with his prep notes, but one of the things that we discussed was, uh, C D I, is continuing to work on our technical grades, uh, we talked about our electric bus grant, um, reviewing that still. Uh, Kevin's gonna continue updating the finance and planning committee on that, but just to remind the public, Leona School District was awarded the largest, uh, electric bus grant at any public school in, in, uh, I think in New Jersey. Yeah, I think in New Jersey, for one, uh, just under one point eight million dollars. And what that would do is, uh, it doesn't cover the cost of a full electric bus, but it makes it comparable to the cost of a diesel bus, uh, because their goal is to get diesel buses off the road. Um, so we're discussing that still, uh, because still, still the cost is a significant amount of money, but our buses are aging out, so it actually came at a perfect time, uh, in that, in that sense. Um, and then, I think, the, the most interesting thing that we discussed is how we're going to potentially fund our reserve accounts for capital projects, for buildings. Uh, it's a hot topic in our town, uh, always, is that, does it water pay for capital improvement projects? So, the way we fund our capital reserve projects, sorry, this is not his way exactly. Uh, the way we're funding cap. I want people to hear me, though. All right, the way we're funding our capital reserve right now is we're taking surplus at the end and funding it for the next year. So oftentimes, that money from surplus gets used to shore up certain parts of the budget that maybe were as funded, or, uh, items came up that need, you know, emergency repair, something like that. And our, our, uh, capital reserve funds can fluctuate greatly if we, say, have an emergency. I mean, finance it, well, they may be money, as much money as we need to build into that account, won't go into that account. So what we were discussing is funding it upfront, and earmarking tuition dollars from Edgewater to, you know, percentage of tuition dollars from Edgewater to go into that account. So we can clearly show that Edgewater is contributing to our capital, uh, reserve budget for future projects. Um, and in terms of the state tuition formula, there was some discussion I saw, uh, on the list there, I believe, of state tuition formula. I just want to remind, uh, everyone in the public that we have two options. There's the state tuition formula, and there's the A four formula. And that formula, we use the state, uh, calculated formula. So the state comes in and they say, this is how much Edgewater owes, and that's what we go. The other formula would be, Leona and Doris sit down together and we figure out what each side owes. Now, other districts have done that, and it doesn't end well very often, because one district will say, just as Edgewater says, they, a lot of people in Edgewater will say, they paid too much, and people in Leona will say, you paid too little, and there's no agreement between the two. Um, and it gets really messy between, uh, between school districts. So certainly, the state calculated formula is the best way to go, in my opinion, um, and that's what we've always used. Um, and from my understanding, it does account for, uh, capital contributions, but I'm, we, we should definitely look further into it. But those are the options that we have. Uh, and I think by funding, the taking Edgewater tuition dollars and putting it into a reserve account upfront, we have a very good way to finance future capital projects to ensure that Edgewater and our Edgewater tuition dollars are going into whatever we're building. Uh, I think it'll, it'll, it's a win-win for, for Edgewater, and if we're leaning into it, they can say, well, the money is going into your future buildings. Uh, if there are future capital improvements, I should say, we're not necessarily building anything anytime soon, but capital improvement projects, and, uh, we can say clearly, that, that would be, uh, would anything happen?
I just, let's be the important, like, I was confused with that, that their past base was.
Yes, yes.
Right, right, it just wasn't categorized, categorized the way you just described, it was not, took a clearer turn to us, but now, we're gonna.
And the surplus is fluctuated greatly, uh, depending on what expenditure needs to be made.
Yeah, expenditure.
And from what I understand, our capital reserve should be based on our long-range facility, right?
It's the local, it's the local chair.
Okay, so, so right now, we're not even doing that. Um, and now, I'm, we have another part of our meeting, uh, was that our, our long-range facility plan is underway. We, uh, the board knows, we commissioned, uh, E and B.
E and B.
E and B to, uh, develop a new long-range facility plan, and they've been working with Kevin and Eric and Ed to, uh, to, to get online. It should be done in a.
It'd be, uh, middle, in the market.
Middle, in the market, so that'll be very exciting, and I think we can definitely, uh, uh, it's a big deal. Um, and, and, and I'm very happy that this board decides to do this very forward-thinking of us. Um, and that'll help us figure out, you know, uh, uh, how much of that percentage we should earmark for the reserve account. And I think transitioning to this is really, if we do do it, uh, it'll really fundamentally change, uh, how we're looking at our relationship with Edgewater, if, if the public understands, and I think it's our job to educate the public on, on these changes and developments, and, uh, and it's very important. Uh, is there, is there, uh, was there any other?
There was, like, um, heat map, heat map update.
Oh, yeah, the heat mapping update, uh, from C D I mentioned here, um, that was completed. Uh, this board commissioned the heat mapping. That was completed. This board commissioned the heat mapping of our, of our access points from the recent tech upgrades, because as everyone knows, we still have tech problems. In turn, our coverage is pretty good, actually. That wasn't the problem. And the problem. So different IP addresses were going back and forth, so certain devices weren't able to get online. But the company that we contracted, the CDI, is continuing to work on it, and hopefully soon. But we will.
Exactly, soon this will.
Oh, yeah, we've already seen one drop, but I'm saying hopefully soon, we will have what we paid for, what the taxpayers paid for, and a perfect internet for our students and our teachers, which is long overdue and should have been done a long time ago, but had to pick up. So I'm glad the board even made that assessment in the first place. So hopefully that could send us.
Kevin was our brother's grandfather, wanted to make sure, that I just received a text from him, reminding me to make sure everyone knows that tomorrow, our, the first reopening of our gym at high school level is tomorrow. It looks beautiful. I think I have a picture in the last, I'm not sure if it was in there, but the floor looks beautiful, the bleachers are right up, the floor looks gorgeous. And tomorrow, we'll have our gym back slowly. The next step would be to redo the matting, paint the walls, and then put the bleachers in. And we were hoping that'll be there for your last graduation home. But there'll be, there'll be a floor tomorrow, and again, it does look gorgeous. So Kevin is very happy.
That's wonderful, and I saw a picture of it. It looks great. It really, it looks fantastic. The logo in the middle looks great. Photo branding, it matches, it matches.
I don't match.
Thank you, for those who don't know, I'm on, on big brands, so that's how we need to do a little bit better with the branding and uniformity. And so the Leonia on our field. Opinions, strong opinions, long-term vision, but it matches, which I'm very happy about. I think that was it for my guess, right? So I look forward to when Dan returns, so he can get his first. All right, can you really?
I'm wondering if that brandy saying was intended well. We had a, the committee had a community relations and communications committee had a meeting on February first. We discussed, of course, always, the ongoing updates to our website. And, you know, as we use it and as other people in the district use it, we find things that aren't bite driving. We, we, you know, we recommend, make recommendations to admin and help to fix it because they have different controls and they can go in and they can make corrections very quickly. So for the public, if you find something on the website that you don't quite understand, you think that maybe needs to be corrected, please send, you know, shoot an email to somebody in the administration board office, and we can take care of it. We also talked about how to communicate, and so we've, we talk about committees. And I think sometimes people understand what committees do, and other times, it's kind of like a mystery or meeting, like in secret times, just a little bit of a group of people. But it's not, it's not really like that. It's several board members meet, they have more focused meetings together, and they're, and the committees are working down by different purposes. So our committee is going to encourage the chairs of all of the committees for the board then to make sort of like a little information of that can be put on the website. I did notice that some other districts maybe have like just like a little blurb or a little short description of what the committee does. But we're gonna try to go just a little bit deeper and maybe answer some questions, maybe have like a, you know, frequently asked questions kind of thing, you know, what do your committee do, and why can't you do this, you know, who has control over that? So we're gonna work on that. It'll probably take a couple, maybe a month or two to get together, and we'll let you know when that is up and running. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Isaac, we have a meeting, a boss meeting anyway, so.
Yeah, we have a boss meeting on the last night, most quietly, the topics we discussed about. The first thing was about the, our, the school some, the cell phone policy and all electric device policies. And the other one was about the, you know, about the COVID related mask policies, and it was the this quarantine stuff. So the first thing we talked about is the cell phone policies. Right now, there's some policies, actually, the policy demanded saying that the, in order to students to bring their, like, the cell phone or electric devices, they need to school commission. However, we don't really have such a thing, and the cell phones are so, you know, everyone has it. So that we kind of made it through the, the each schools, the student handbook. And each student handbook defines the, you know, who can bring the cell phone, all that. So the point, example, high schools, students, they can allow, they can bring their cell phone, but they can use, they cannot use it in the classroom unless the instructor, you know, they allow to do so. So that's the kind of the high school policies. But on the ACS, well, what do you know, the ACS handbook, I cannot find it on our, like, website. So maybe it's Google, please, you know, put that, the handbook in ACS on the website. From like I copy that handbook to the different sources, I looked at it. And the ACS and LMS, both, both schools are not allowed to using the cell phone devices in entire school days. So which means that the company, the, our policy and the student handbook says that the ACS LMS, they cannot allow using their cell phones during the school hours at all. But about the, you know, the ALCS at this high school, they can use it when there's like a, teachers have permission for it. So this is current rule, so that, please, like, this is a rule, so follow it. Continue so, and but on like with the, I know that there's like handbook, it's updating it. So with the updating, it's probably there's some little better vision for it, but that's what it is right now. And the next one was, you know, we threw a tight pitch of the, our mask policies. Like, that's what we just discussed again, but however, yeah, I mean, until like you said, this is what was that, that we're going to the, meet the, on our March second, the other meeting to discuss about our mask policies and as well as like the facility policies, that's what it was. So, you know, so we are meeting on the March second about, talk about mask policies and and one thing though, about the cell phone policies, we probably have to, we need to change it a little bit to update whatever current, the and, obviously, whatever, our handbook, handbook and our policy does not really tie matches it. So we kind of have to take the policy to the mask day or whatever the contents of it, to support whatever the handbook does. So that's it.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a. I just wanted to add one thing. So Anna, Xanthi and I had a really great diversity inclusion committee or with some community members today. And we were discussing what we went over in our policy committee, how the handbooks and some policies are not aligned right now, and that's a big problem. So we're, that, that group provided some feedback from the DNI angle of our handbooks. And then Xanthi and I are gonna bring it to the VPs to discuss, and then we'll send it to the policy committee and full board to discuss. And then by the, what month do we say, May? By May, the full board will approve, or will be before the board to approve the new handbook for the upcoming year. And I want to say, that's not really something that our board's supposed to do, but hasn't really done in depth in a, in a long time. And that's why we have policies that are just totally mismatched with handbooks, because our policies are outdated, or the handbooks are outdated in a intuitive need. So in terms of improving procedure, it's definitely, I'm really glad that the policy committee, Isaac, thank you, and then our DNI committee, Anna, and Xanthi, thank you for for making it work now and updating it all, so it's really very cool.
Part of our discussion last night was to, a lengthy discussion last night was to get the three schools to give an update on on our current policies, what the post policies are gonna be, and what, how we're enforcing those policies. So I've had three vice presidents for today, and each of them sent me these documents ready, and I'll send it to the committee someday this week.
All right, next, Kim, you're speaking here.
Yep, we've had, we've had a meeting on January nineteenth, a good meeting. We had a discussion about student ID cards at high school that we'll probably continue on for our next meeting. We discussed school bus driver safety and some new legislation with that. There was some new legislation about safety drills and, or we're complying with that, that explore. There was a security officer course that was scheduled for our SSOs. And.
Thank you very much. And then last, now at least two representatives, you have any? All right, the next item on our agenda is, is in education, and it's about the hundred and eighty-one versus hundred and eighty schools. So first, is there a motion on this item? Motion, or you can second, Anna? All right, so for discussion, I mentioned that I had to discuss it. So last week, or was it Friday? Dr. Lee made the decision to have a virtual day. I don't, I don't agree with virtual days, I think a lot of the board didn't agree with virtual days, but I made the decision to go to virtual because we had
What was the moment for the electricity and there was no phones?
Right, there was no phones, and no phones was actually pretty, yeah, exactly, a pretty big security and safety issue. But nevertheless, we had a virtual day, but the county did not count that as an official school day. So despite the fact that there was virtual learning, that's what we called it. The, so, so the teachers worked that day, the students showed up that day, but the county says that wasn't a day. So the decision before this board is to modify the calendar to a hundred and eighty days. So that way, the state and our school reflects properly in terms of attendance, modifying what our calendar says. So, you know, I, I think in, in the future, we should certainly. I think last meeting, a lot of board members spoke in opposition to, to virtual days, and I think we should have a discussion on, on future policy. Because I imagine the state will eventually give leeway to the district to decide, but right now, it's, there's no virtual learning. Unless it's what, it's four consecutive days?
Well, they did approve throughout the year other virtual days, that's why I was hoping that they would approve this one based on safety and security, they didn't. I knew that we, we had that one day necessary, but they had approved other virtual days throughout the year.
Yeah, most people like staffing sort of.
Yes, I was surprised for safety and security, they didn't approve. I was disappointed, but that's what happened. Looking back on it, I, I had two choices, either to go virtual or cancel. Because I couldn't get to school there with no, no ability to, to emergency. I thought I had a shot, I had a good shot of the state saying yes. It was four thirty, as I said earlier, didn't really have much time, I couldn't reach the county until we were there that day. So I had a decision one or the other. Was it the state, maybe, canceling that day, I didn't think it was appropriate or like that, financially. And I was hoping, I, I thought it was the, they did.
So that's where we're at now, and I think you definitely want to discuss on, on virtual days, the sentiment we should want to have that now, it's up to you guys. But bottom line is, is that we're being asked to mandate our calendar, one eighty-one is a hundred and eighty is to honor that day.
But in reality, in our school system, globally, we'd be going one eighty-one because we. One eighty, the state, so we need the state mandated, and we technically need our calendar to be one eighty-one.
There's definitely an idea in that one.
Is the virtual day the reason why the professional day, March fourteenth, because being with two major schools in the school?
No, it goes back to Hurricane Ida, so that's the next one.
And is the virtual day, this will not maybe come to, is that possibly going to affect the date of graduation at all right now? For the finals of the school?
No, 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 we're not having to cut on that. If the, if the board vote is in favor of the one eighty, one eighty for the state, one eighty state for the case, we still have one eighty one, hopefully.
What, what, what state, what goes one eighty-one means is that we're essentially not changing anything. If we go to one eighty-one, then we would be changing. Technically adding that to that.
Right, yes, right now, we have one eighty-one days of the.
Yes, well, what I'm saying is that, that's, that's what we've agreed upon, that, that, that's counting the virtual. But the county said enough, so we're just trying to keep it consistent with what we have before, while respecting the fact that the county said that they don't.
That's correct.
So it wouldn't change if we, if we go to one eighty, we would be honored if we already said it.
First question.
Yeah. I looked at about two or four months.
When the high school had the SFS mediation, they were virtual, right?
That's correct.
Wouldn't it have been an option, would it be an option in the future for the buildings that were not affected by the power outage? For those kids to come to school while the, the high school is affected by the power outage? Similar to what happened with the SFS mediation?
Yes, and whatever the phones, whatever reason, I don't know the answer, we're still trying to figure it out. Even though the power outage on Thursday was calling impact in high school, I guess because the servers are in the high school, it impacted all three schools. We didn't have phones in all three schools. The twenty servers on Thursday sometimes, I guess it was sometime after school, because again, as you said, all the ACS and LMS might didn't provide outage. But if it over, throughout the evening, for some reason, all twenty servers went down. So on, we, we could have done that if we had phones. My biggest concern wasn't necessarily the Google classroom or any computer technology. Yes, it was like before, before the pandemic and before Google. But there's the fact that we didn't have the phones for security. That really bothered me, concerned, and that's why, again, as you say, you think it's a point. We did go virtual for SFS, but we couldn't go virtual for security and safety.
All right, Scott? All right, the motion that was second, all the parties.
Ms. Almanis?
Yes.
Ms. Troy?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Melman?
Melman.
Ms. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Ms. Wildes?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Seven to one, voting yes.
Then the next item is, for E and B, and that's about making a professional day on March fourteenth. You know, applying to a full day of school for students in faculty. That was, was that motion, motion, or is there a second, second Anna? Dr. Lee, you want to give a discussion on this?
Yeah, yeah, this does, this, speaking what Eli said earlier, it could impact graduation negatively if you don't make this a school day. The problem is, right now, March fourteenth is later in the winter, and if we have a professional day scheduled, and we need that, we have snow days either before or after that, it would push back graduation because we have that certain of those school days. So if we're making March fourteen a school day, not a professional day, it gives the students an extra day. And also, if you remember way back in September, when we had Hurricane Ida, we pushed on professional day to a school day because of the fact that the teachers didn't have a second professional day. I know it's complicated, but it does give us another school day, just in case we have bad weather, a storm, a power outage, whatever, all the things we've had, I think we have an envoys issue. Start the school yourselves. Yes, that's right, yes. I hope not, so that, so that gives us an extra school day.
Because I know right now, people lack their schools on June.
The Friday.
Yeah, June twenty-fourth. So moving, so moving this professional day to a full school day, say we have no more.
And we'll, we'll, we'll.
And if there's, say, one more snow day, even on the.
We're good, so.
Well, there are two.
Two snow days built in, if you approve this.
So if there are no more snow days than school and Wednesday, except Friday?
If you approve, if, if this gets approved, because we just approved the other one, which is a snow day. If we approve this one, then we have two snow days, but again, it's only February. My mom was born in February, and she said snow on most of her birthdays, so. I'm not confident that even though this will be fifty degrees later this week, it's not gonna snow again. And, and March snows, there's no really, but it does snow March and February, so. It would give us a second snow day if we change it to a. So it would give us a second snow day if we change it to a school day. So on graduation, right now's the Friday, we didn't use snow days, move it once.
Where is the correct one?
That's correct.
And is there a plan to like make up for this professional development for the teachers?
No, we, my contract is, the, the last day of school for the students. My contract is also the last day of school for the teachers. I've talked to John about this and he's in favor of giving this up this year. Again, this has been a very charming year for, for all of us. Parents, students, teachers, administrators, or attorney, or president. Everyone, it's not, everyone. So, uh, at this point, again, this is a unique year. Uh, I think I mean, said earlier, this is not setting any precedent. Just hopefully.
I don't count.
No, I hope not, I was ready for any more years like this. We return to normalcy, we just follow our calendar, which, uh, we don't get Hurricane Ida in first base school. That's a good issue. Eli, is that answered your question?
Yeah.
Any, any other questions you have for that?
I think, uh, every M.A.S. student past graduation should have to answer a question about how school calendar is working. And what day are you going to graduate? A hurricane in Lucas is active on Monday and Friday. And, and, and the technology's not working on Wednesday. It comes on Thursday. When do you graduate?
Some of the questions that.
Yeah. Alright, we're back to Keith's. Is there any further discussion? Alright, roll over.
This is for March fourteen becoming a school day. Ms. Albany?
Yes.
Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Melman?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Wildes?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Alright, so that was consent.
There's unknown losses. New business items.
Okay. For a third, it's a new business. We did the old batch in a way that is not, because the students had, so there's several walk-ins. Um, you know, normally we put it up on the agenda, but because the tech was out. So we had, we had to revert back to, uh, what is it, like three twenty nineteen days where we just walk into business items. So on paper. Yeah, these guys, down.
So the new business that is on the agenda upon our recommendation. Will to approve maternity for the schools from May thirteenth to twenty twenty-two. It's February one, twenty twenty-three. Second piece of the planning of the school will to approve maternity for teachers who have not. For promotion within twenty twenty-two, February first, twenty twenty-two. And then there's, uh, from, again, the, the bill list was done in time. He goes, there was no access to our computers for three days. Uh, I'll read each, there's three parts to this. With information received from the business administrator, super can recommend to approve January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. February seventh, twenty twenty-two. To list the bills totally hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and three cents. But the claims represented as appended have been found in order by the board secretary, business administrator. Are hereby ordered to be released for payment. Letter B, with information received from business administrator, super can recommend. To approve the revised list of bills with regard to boarding check number two sixty-five. Initiating electronic payment relating to December twenty twenty-one health benefits. Totally four hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and fifteen cents. But the claims represented as appended have been found in order by the board secretary, business administrator. Are hereby ordered to be released for payment. And following their stated, upon our recommendation, super can the schools look to approve the business administrator, board secretary. To authorize to approve payments and claims for any past due invoices. With the funds that have been provided for in the budget. Any such approval payment must be presented to the board for verification at the next regular board meeting. This will be for a temporary period until the next regular board meeting on March eighth, twenty twenty-two. So those are the five items of the business, two written and two ready. Three ready.
Is there a motion on the business items? Anna, is there a second? Or, or Ian? Uh, and any discussion on, on the new business items? Alright, um. Yeah, we're all good.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Ms. Albany's?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Melman?
Yes.
Ms. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Wildes?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. Okay, we are now back at the second public comment portion of the meeting. Uh, past all public comments, there kept two minutes. But on this one, you can talk about anything you like, uh, related to the Leonia Guard explosion, please. Uh, is there a motion and, um, is there a motion?
David.
Isaac, is there a second? Anna? Um, anyone in the public, please just raise your hand and we'll call them. Uh, if you could say your name and address, yes.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Montemino.
If you could just come to the, like, I'm sorry. Thank you. And if the light's not on, we would, just, we were straight and you came here. Thank you so much.
Hello, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so hi, I'm Jen Montemino. Um, I was asked if I'm here today to speak in behalf of the COVID policy. Um, and what I wanted to question, I knew, obviously, we have talked about the new policy, um, going forward. My question is, how can we make the administration better be able to inform parents of the policies? I personally had a pretty bad experience of being told incorrect information, and all other parents have as well. So, um, I don't know if it should be coming from the administration, or if it should be coming from the nurse, or if it should be coming from the board. But, um, right now, it's not clear and I'm not, I'm not certain. And that will be clear through administration going forward, uh, however it happens.
Thank you very much. And we'll, we'll answer all questions, if you have work on it. Thank you. Other members of the public back? Oh, welcome back, everyone. Still, still on?
Okay, hi, Honey Leslie. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, to comment on the, like, question of the masks. I feel, um, that it is going a bit quickly to make any kind of decision tonight. Um, as, um, it's going so quickly, there's not a lot of input from parents or from teachers. There's no teacher left here tonight to speak, which I feel is completely important. Um, so I wanted to just sort of pick out on the side of every, uh, you know, the caution. Uh, we wore masks earlier in the school year when we were at similar levels. I'm not keep wearing them. They are proven to work. Uh, I did have a question about, um, the vaccination rate, but not just vaccination rate, because you're talking about vaccination. But you're not including booster rates. And so what we saw happen with Omicron was that people were getting these, uh, these cases when they were vaccinated. But vaccinated before they got a booster. So, so your definition of vaccinated has to be really specific. Because apparently with the booster, you have, um, much more immunity. So I would rather see the mask mandate lifted a little later. When there's been more chance for the student body to get their boosters. Like we saw that, for example, speaking to the question of the athlete, for example. My son goes cross-country, he ran two seasons across country, that's highly athletic, you know? They're running out there nine miles in practice. And he, he, he did it in a mask, he has great arms now, and the team did great. And the only time they, uh, the team had a large outbreak, or like someone keeps telling me, from one of his friends on the team, seems to have reported. It's COVIDed after the, um, awards dinner someplace in New Jersey where a lot of people had to take their masks off to eat. So, um, anyway, so, uh, let me remind you of the question of eating. You mentioned rice, the question of lunch. I don't think that's a fair comparison, right? Because at lunch, you can choose who you eat with and where you eat, especially at the high school. Um, if you don't want to eat amongst other people, you can go outside to eat. Or you can find a corner, or you can eat with just your friends, who you feel are pretty safe, that you know who they're knowing. You, whereas in the classroom, you don't have that control who you're sitting next to, who you're on a good project with, forcing shoulder to shoulder with. And I think that in classrooms, it would be, uh, as I always say, more courteous and more fair to retain the masking. Because, uh, studies show, and actually, even if you go, just come to any building, it usually has these signs. That show that if one person is wearing the mask and the others are not, it gives some protection. But the total, in fact, totally effective protection is when both parties, the person with COVID and the non-COVID person have masks. Then you're, you know, I feel very confident sending my son to school, even in the middle of Omicron. Like, you know, another thing, I'm good, they're like, oh, it's okay. Uh, it'll be fine because everybody's wearing their mask. And, and as Dr. D said, it allows things to go on. So I feel like saying this is inevitable, that we have to go, uh, you know, take the mask mandate off. I don't think it's inevitable. I think that we don't have to make decisions now, because if there's a policy in place, why not leave it in place? And then in March, we can make a decision about it, for example. Just because other schools are taking it off in March, doesn't mean that we have to. Why can't we look at the numbers and really look at what the status is at that moment and get a better sense? And by then, maybe more people have boosters, that sort of thing. I think one could put off the decision for a month. And, uh, we've seen that the way these things, the curves go, is that the warmer, the warmer the weather, the less likely there is of transmission and the numbers go down. Um, the kids are graded with the masks, I think they're big with March.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to be a little bit more funny, you can. I have a hard time making.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Flair from Fifty-three Hawthorne, Paris. Um, I first want to say I appreciate, um, Dr. Burley and the others who made the vaccine clinics possible that we had in town. Uh, I think it was great that Leonia had that so easy for the families to do. Uh, I still think there are young, families of young children who haven't had a chance to get them vaccinated yet. Um, it was only available in November for the five through twelve. And some parents, you know, didn't do it right away and then Omicron hit and they might have been just staying home during that time. So I still think there might be more time for, I still think we might get more uptake on the younger crowd. But, um, fifty percent is not that high. And that's, you know, what Dr. Burley said, we have the A C S. And I know, um, the lower grades, the middle school are also still not that high. Um, uh, I have a question about the quarantine rules. Um, so if I'm reading this correctly, if a student is vaccinated, the, the bottom part has to do with people who are close contact. I just wanted to confirm, because the way it's worded, it almost sounds like if somebody's vaccinated and they have COVID, that they would not be quarantined. I'm assuming some, because people who are vaccinated do get COVID, so they would be on the top, that's not part of the top part, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, because it says close contacts under mask, close contacts, but then under that, it just says vaccinated individuals. I don't know, I could have just been reading it strangely, but I just wanted to clarify.
We'll answer more.
Okay. Um, and then also, I appreciate what Maria and Isaac said about, um, community input. And just having, um, parents and teachers, um, have an ability to, um, comment on this. Because it wasn't on the agenda for the meeting tonight. Um, I wonder if we have a sense of what the community thinks about this. Um, my sense is that there's general support for masking in Leonia. Unlike other parts of New Jersey, um, that Murphy might have been responding to. I think generally support is pretty good. I think students are not complaining for the most part. Um, I don't think, I think generally there's overall support for masking. And so I think, um, we should see how the community, um, feels and what the rollout should be of any changes, um, the times of any changes. Um, also, just a couple of logistical questions. So my understanding is that the CDC says that if you've had, um, COVID, when you come back after the five days or the seven days of the quarantine policies. That you should wear, um, a mask for the next five days after, after you return. Um, so I think there needs to be something in the policy to make that clear that. And then how would that be enforced in school? If a student comes back from quarantine and has to wear the mask, but wasn't somebody who was wearing it before? That's just something that you would have to deal with, um, now. Um, and then also, if another variant, um, comes up again, unfortunately. Do we have the ability to pivot quickly and put masks back in place if that's determined necessary? Would that be built into the policy?
Thank you very much. Thank you. You weren't with me, guys, those are. Thank you very much.
You want to go out? I'm gonna walk right in front of the camera. Hi, everybody. Where am I?
If we could have a share. Is there a motion to state this happening to overcome? Motion, Isaac, second, Maria, and all in favor? Uh, any opposing intentions? Alright, so, um, I suppose now we'll go back to, uh, discussion we had as we tabled it until last year, the second public comment portion. Uh, one second, one second. Okay, so yeah. Alright. One, one second. Alright, one. Uh, is, is there any discussion, further discussion? Oh, oh, yes, very far. So let's talk about board comments. So the first question was asked, thank you, was about how can we make our quarantine very clear?
Yes, I'm, I think I can answer most of the questions. Uh, it was an isolated incident with one of the schools and we've had discussions, uh, significant discussions since then, since the concerns. I did not anticipate that would continue. Uh, we will be more clear with, uh, with the administrative team throughout the district. Uh, that this policy will be enforced by each of the schools. So I would, I would, I would, I would, uh, promise you that it's not going to continue. Uh, Dr. Lency, I don't have a booster rate percent, we don't have a booster rate percent, we can get that. As I said earlier, uh, we pay for a connection between Genesis and JRS, which gives us the numbers. I just don't have those in front of me right now. Uh, but I do not think the booster rate is that high. Students, as someone mentioned earlier, it certainly wasn't, I think Mrs. Slade mentioned earlier that. Wasn't a lot of time to get a booster shot for the students. There's some way they didn't, again, you have to wait five months for booster. According to what we heard today, because a kid, a student can't take a booster, he couldn't. There's only thirty seconds after. According to the, uh, the policies that was there today. The booster shot for teenagers who are between five and eleven is, uh, five months. So there's five. Oh, then, then fifteen to eighteen is five months. Where were kids, there was five months, not three months. Thank you, Mary. Uh, Dr. Lency, Mrs. Slade, I think the, the number fifty percent, if I can hold number, I think we're higher than that. But I don't think it's much higher than that. I can get updated numbers pretty soon. And then close contact, if you are vaccinated positive, um, COVID, when you're vaccinated, when you're vaccinated, you're going to still quarantine. I think that, I will make it clear here, if you are in close contact and you're vaccinated, you do not quarantine. But if you're positive, you're given quarantine. And I think that's, I think that was pretty much all the questions I was starting.
Thank you, Dr. Burley. Alright, uh, is there, uh, more comment? And then we can just return to the discussion that we tabled for after. So is there any other board comment? Yes, free.
I wanted to.
I want to.
I wanted to thank everybody for, for the concerns. And I guess for me, I keep hearing like, what's the harm? Like, what's the harm if they just wear masks for an extra day, an extra month? But, you know, like, if your children don't experience any harm, that's really wonderful. But some kids, like, actually have real consequences for, for wearing a mask. And it can be a hardship. And so I just want to be cautious in, in, um, in kind of just not thinking that, that one person's experience is representative of everybody's experience. Because, you know, it's, it's very different, I would imagine, in the high school versus the elementary school. Just like virtual learning is very different, right? If you're six or seven, or if you're sixteen or seventeen, what you can get out of sitting in front of a computer, or changing instead of front of a computer. So things like that. And, you know, I have seen firsthand real harm of masks, uh, to our younger children in particular. And so. And so for me personally, you know, given the conditions on the ground currently, the potential harm outweighs the potential benefit of keeping a mask.
So this, I'm just moving to the discussion on the topic. Is there any discussion on, about the seven day, we'll talk first about the seven day, sorry. About March 7th, thank you. We'll talk about the tabletop, we don't, we're not going to go into that. Yeah, mask option. Yeah, I want to just, you know, I think it's unfortunate timing that the governor's announcement was yesterday. Noreen, I completely agree. And it's highly unusual, I think everyone in the public base, attention to our board meeting would know that we're very transparent on this board and that all discussion topics are blasted out to 8,000 people online and our agenda is always trying to reflect, our, our board agenda is the exact same now it is than, than the public one, that it's not the other way. So transparency is very important. But unfortunately, just timing wise, the session came up. So I think it was inevitable that we would have to discuss it at the very least. And whether or not we voted up to this board, of course, but, yeah. So is there, is there, is there a further discussion on table?
Can you remember? I think it takes a little time to warm up. And thank you for your comments and staying with us. And what I gather from the people, I personally feel there is a strong need to get input from our community. We heard of the concern and I also hear, you know, various, I see all the points and I'm really curious to see what other thoughts and comments and concerns or comments are going to be coming from other parents. And this is how we've been handling the COVID situation. If I'm not mistaken, even if I was the board member, we always had an opportunity to to talk to the parents and our teachers and administration for every single version of policies that we put out and how we survived through this COVID. And I see no different than any of the previous policies we put out. I understand the timing aspect of it. Hopefully we can resolve that tonight, maybe by extending with a certain deadline or target date. Whatever we come up to think, you know, think about together. But we already talked about our very focused community leaning to address all these, you know, aspects or concerns we discovered tonight. Unvaccinated population and different pros and cons of masking concerns. So I think we do have a good plan to tackle all these, you know, uncertainties unknowns. Like we kind of branding the, getting the input from our stakeholders as part of that process. And also have a set date when we're going to talk about to make the decision based on whatever findings and discussions we have making. And I would feel comfortable with that.
You said staples right at the end, but you said, you know, parents and, and, you know, teachers and everybody. But you're missing the most important part, which is our students is the reason why we're all here. So if we really want to take care of our students, we must make them part of the conversation too. I think when you say that you don't think that the students are complaining about wearing masks, oh, my kid doesn't complain about wearing whatever. It's because they've been told, like, you can't come to school without a mask on. You can participate in sports without masks. You can't do this without masks. So you know what, they're not saying it anymore because they know they can't take the mask off anyway, so why complain? But if you gave them a choice to make it optional, I think most students would say, wait, I can actually take it off now, but it's okay for you to take it off? Yeah, I'm taking the mask off. So, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little thrown. If I were a student today, I would want to take the mask off. And I, and I would want my parents to say to me, it's like, yes, it's your choice, but I'm okay with you taking off if you don't want to have it on.
I would just like follow the comment and then on the next. So now I move this really a bit. I don't think this is the same process as the formulation of the RMBV plan. Where we did, we always, editing were the best show on TV in, or late in Leonia. Late night, too. You know, we had great reading, so. I think the difference though is that this is one policy. And that's our responsibility is to say, we're the ones who are elected to say, you know, this is the policy of this school, the board is responsible for gathering information and making those decisions on behalf of who we represent. I see it just as different in the formulation of entire policy, entire structure. How are we going to run the district in this unprecedented time versus are we going to go mask optional on March 7th for the governor? I just see those as different things and it falls squarely on this board to make that decision. How we want to solicit feedback. You know, definitely up to the board if we want to hold a special meeting, that's up to the board. But at the end of the day, we're going to be the ones that have to make the decision. And I hope that when we do make the decision, and not to discount anyone in this room at all, I think all the views are valid. But when we have that special meeting, I really hope that we're not listening to the loudest voices in the room. Because I do think that, you know, we talked about masking, I think there is COVID opinion shaming. And if your opinion is that, you know, I don't want to take the mask, you might not come to that meeting because you don't want to be drowned out by your neighbor who thinks, oh, you know what, I disagree with you. And how, you know, maybe I don't want my kid hanging out. I, I just don't want to see that, that type of device of this occur. And I'm afraid of, well, because we see it at the national level and I'm afraid that that would be so different. And I, I don't want to share our responsibility to make that decision. But I am sympathetic to what Noreen said, that this was brought upon us immediately. And I'm sympathetic to that, but.
Just want to add a thought.
Yeah, sure.
So I wasn't really thinking about like being thoughtful for this one topic. We can do a survey like we did. And I'm not suggesting we're going to make the decision just solely based on like survey results. But we've got to have some reference point. We have to get some like, that, that was one point. Maybe have a meeting with the teacher representatives, I think that's a good, I think that's a good point. Oh, you say already happened, that's right. So if you, okay, so we have the input from, do we have a meeting on masking?
No, no, no. What I would say is that.
So, yeah, I'll just initiate up. So my, my application to receiving input from the state board is to the extent, at the minimum, we may have a survey form, you know, passed it out and just, you know, give an opportunity to the parents who want to voice their opinion. Who could even make it even, yeah, I don't know, we didn't have any agenda. So if we had an agenda, there might, might have been more parents, I do not know. But have that opportunity available and haven't spoken to LBI yet about this. And I think that was our intention anyway, when we talked about this earlier for the policy committee. We should say we're going to invite.
Well, from what I understand, we're going to discuss our future quarantine policy after this has passed. Because I think the quarantine policy that we just passed would need to change if people are mask optional. And that was really my understanding, wasn't that we were going to discuss.
Okay, so now I understand what you guys are saying. But again, because that was, that's my application in terms of getting the, the common goal.
I would then be, and then I'm going to leave a good point, that's my point. We've done surveys in the past and in my experience, and maybe other board members can echo this, or maybe you disagree. I'm very wary of it, of when we do surveys, because I'm, we don't always get 100% response. Those who do respond are often more inclined to respond because they have a strong opinion one way or another. And ultimately, it shirks our responsibility, we're, we are not a direct democracy. We are not.
I'm suggesting, I'm looking branches from parents. And at the same time, given if our experience hasn't been successful with some of the people surveys, I, I don't think we should give out any like input from our.
Well, then are we going to make the survey resell public? Because I would expect if we do a survey, it would be public. And if it says that 70% are against mask reform masks, well, then it gives that side the ammunition to say, this is what we're going to do. And really, that's our decision, that's, that's why we're represented here. But it's going to be a lot, I, I would, I think a lot of us would have a hard time if 70% or our many said, or, you know, even 51% said, let's do X. And we all felt, let's do Y. It's going to become a lot harder to justify it. And then we're really trembling on.
I'm still like, kind of like not on the same page. When, when I say surveys, it's not like, do you want to take the mask off? Yes or no, not, not that kind of survey. What I'm looking for is, like, you know, the comments from the parents like tonight. What their concerns are, what their thoughts are. Maybe it is a thought coming from high school parents. So we keep that in mind. But the parent is speaking from the high school parents' standpoint. Then we hear the concerns and perspectives from the elementary school parents group and middle school. So it is ultimately becoming our tool and reference point to help find us to make a policy and we're going to have a justification. Or it's ultimately the party that makes the decision, that's our whole responsibility. By means, I'm suggesting, like, let's just do a survey and what percentage we get. And well, based on this survey, 25% of parents filled out, but it's a survey we put out. So we still want to follow the percentage that wins. No, I'm not suggesting. It is more of community relations and community missions, giving an opportunity and just following the rules that we set forth, which like just, just going back to the Noreen's point. Unless it's the national.
I, I, I think there is a, that's what we've been trying to emphasize. And also, like, you know, this is always just a surprise of like, hopefully, you know, today, now, they talk a lot about masking and all that. That's actually exactly echoing what I hear from the people I know. And right now, a lot of countries are concerned about this, about this unmasking policy. And also, quite surprisingly, I don't know, this is because my son, this fifth grader, and he, before I come to meeting, he said like, he was like, you know, the people. He brought this like topic that, hey, today in the school, his class, they, they talked about like the mask policy in their class. And then like, you know, there's somebody asking like, you know, his T-shirt, his T-shirt that, hey, when are we going to do like the mask and stuff? So they're like, you know, also surprised that like fifth grader talked about those stuff. And my son basically said that, you know, or the teacher said that, you will decide. However, and my son is at the same time, he said that, he says he's concerned. I mean, I, what he's calling is that, hey, whatever decision we made, it's your choice. That you feel that you, you're safe to wear a mask, you could, no matter what, you should wear a mask. That's your decision for now. As of the, we are like the governing body of the, you know, the, whatever this, the laws and stuff. Yes, we have, you know, we couldn't do this. However, at the same time, what is mostly a group of public at the same time? And what is it like for them and what, that's something that they want? We have to listen to them. Even though, even though like the certain thing, certain thing is a bit better, we cannot really pursue always like the good. Okay, you have to make it something like the bad is not for it. However, if, if a few people try to do that, that's what, that's what I'm talking about. We have to listen to people, we have to allow like people want. At the same time, we kind of like compromise. And then the, by saying that, I think on the, whatever that, the most powerful of masking, is we couldn't probably discuss later that's not. And also, we can, we really do like, you know, really, because we, we, we're not ready for it yet. Because that thing just like came up yesterday.
But it wouldn't take a longer than.
Yeah, 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 so the, I, we should decide like later, not too fast.
Is that optional, I think?
Yes.
Yeah. No, I just want to comment, because I keep going back to everyone's, because Noreen said, we should wait till we have community input. And not that I absolutely appreciate community input, but my original point for bringing up was I didn't understand why it wasn't on the agenda. I was, I was confused, I didn't realize we were going on it, that's why I really brought it up. I still do feel that it would have been nice to have the governor keep, you know, take into account that our school districts have board meetings and different communities are going to feel differently about it and things such as that. But I'm also hearing Dr. Burley say that if we are going to lift the mask mandate, when it sounds like a lot of the rest of the state is going to lift it, our schools need time to prepare for that. So I find myself in like a really awkward place right now. Because if our school needs time to prepare for lifting the mask mandate, then we should, then we should give a lot of that time, right, to get ready. And I, I just would add to that, that I also seem like, it seems like it's happening very quickly. And people keep talking about numbers. And I don't buy that argument because the numbers of like the amount of people that died from COVID in January was the same as it was in May of 2020. Let's talk about the restrictions we have been. Okay, so numbers, it's all, it's all politics, right? We want to move on, I want to move on, I agree, we need to establish some level of normalcy. So I guess I'm in this torn place because if most of the state, the town, the stores, everywhere you go, they'd be mask optional 30 days from now, it doesn't make sense how all the kids are coming to school and that. Because everywhere else they go, you know what I mean? Like, I, I just feel like we're either moving, am I making any kind of?
So.
So it's, it's a tough position to be in, it's like.
I make my own, I make my own decision.
Like, we're being kind of forced to make this.
I agree with that. So there's, I think, an option, a fair compromise option, maybe. If we had a special meeting, which we could do. The wine thing, I don't know if the board is interested in having a special meeting, but.
If you're safe, you're secure, and I will happily cancel it.
Because it's the day of the 20th year.
Much preferred once.
If everyone can do it.
Yeah, if everyone can do it.
February 23rd, I think it might, I think it solves everyone's problem. Because if we have community input, the board can still make a decision. It does allow us to have a meeting before March 7th. So we could do it, the board, the way the board votes. And I think that not having an agenda could come back to his case. And somebody said, you didn't bring that up to the community. So, but it does also, if the people that, if the math vote is to take the mask optional, maybe mask optional, if you go March 7th. So I think we can have a best of all, but having February 23rd.
I have a comment, but if you have a call, please, please go ahead.
I have a playboard. Did Kim have a comment first?
I did, I mean.
Oh, please, please, please.
Just one real quick last point. I know we might talk about it on February 23rd, but from listening to everyone, I almost wish there was like a more gradual release of the policy. Like maybe we unmask our athletes first and we unmask at lunch and we unmask at, and gym class, we're still masked at gym class. Like, I kind of just wish it was a little more gradual than all of a sudden, no mask.
I, I, I just want to ask, because I want to understand. So I don't understand why that would, because my mask is on at gym right now. I mean, passing the gym students and that, and I'm in here mingling, does it not defeat the purpose of them?
Well, it's a little different when elementary school kids are in class, they're like in groups, face to face, whereas the gym class, they're running around, they're spread out, larger.
Right now, it's not, for recess, they don't wear masks, they're just not stop shop outside for.
They're not stop shop outside, but outside is totally different than.
Mary, is there a please?
Thank you. Thank you. The, the portion about community inputs and, you know, as, as an aspect of community relations for the board, I, I would think that actually I would pay more attention and maybe weigh the opinions of the admin of each building if they wanted to survey their community. Because as we said, ACS's parents are going to feel differently than LHS's parents and LMS's parents. So instead of the board surveying all the parents just in one group, do the admin want to survey their groups of parents? And then they can give us the information. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that they have to, I'm just making a suggestion and trying to like collate this data a little bit more accurately.
I think that we sort of hinted at that earlier.
Yeah?
Should I mention more the opinions of the high school parents?
Right, right, absolutely. Right, okay, but instead of the board community relations doing that, I would feel more comfortable.
And the students too.
I would feel more comfortable with the administration doing that.
We could send out a line by the building, not by the whole, like, we send a line out by me, goes to everyone, but we could send a line out by each school. We could send it out in line by the building, not by the whole, like, we send it in line out by me, goes to everybody, but we could send it in line out by each school.
Yeah, and I don't know how the other board members feel on that, but, you know, I would be okay in getting these means of community in that way, so that we know how each building feels.
Yeah, as a question you suggested is strongly, I, I wanna, I wanna make sure that my intention for getting the input is not data-driven. I don't wanna get the statistics at the end. I wanna clear their thoughts, concerns, and stories.
Well, we just don't ask that question. You want that.
All right, right. Since it's gonna be handled through the school admin, if you buy a degree, the majority of you buy a degree, and I want that message to be cleared to the school admin. So we don't, we don't get the survey saying, oh, okay, okay, dear parent, do you want the mask box?
Yeah. Also, I think Mary, Mary, by using her mind system, we can survey our students separately from.
I was gonna say, sincerely like.
We can celebrate separately.
I was gonna say, whatever, you know, however you want to collect this data, fine, but I would sincerely like to know what our students feel. At high school, I want these.
I could divide, I could divide it by, uh, student, teacher, and parent.
Yeah, but I also think that, you know, you know, I'll look, again, I'm just saying, I'm a little hesitant about surveys, because whatever these results are, if I was the public and I had an opinion in one way or another, strongly, if I wanna know what the results are, if our results come out, if ours skewed they may be, you know.
But they're not results.
It's our decision, it's our process and our decision.
I think, I think the key thing that, that, that we need, we need to turn on, is not call it a survey, call it input.
It doesn't matter.
Then it's all survey results.
So we can, we can, we can be quality. I don't need, because the problem, I don't need for, like, a number, it's like, you're gonna get the average. I mean, average is very meaningless, because the impact to the kids at the extremes of that, right? You might not get a strong response from, uh, English language parents, English language learners, but they might be disproportionately affected by masks, right? Things like that. Right, or they might be like, I'm on special education.
I'm confused at how we got to, like, surveying the population.
I don't know.
Like, we kind of went from, it wasn't on the agenda, but we have other meetings that people can attend immediately if they want, to, like, survey the whole town. And.
I, yeah, I, I will say, I'm, I'm, there's not.
Certainly not survey, but, um, like, people don't even participate.
Yeah, no, I don't think we should, and I think that, I, again, I just, I just wanna, again, reiterate.
I feel like adultism needs to, you know.
That's good.
That's a crypto class, I think, isn't it? That's, that's a crypto.
That's why you let seventeen-year-olds make decisions.
It's probably hard to extract that if you need info, though, if you don't ask any, like, stuff, if you don't have any summer statistics. And then the summer statistics kind of hide, like, the experience.
But here's something, if your parents, who could really have a concern, and what, what if it was, have their thoughts been heard? They should have a meeting. They should have a meeting.
Well, they didn't have a meeting.
So, so we had a special meeting that recovered that, and I just reiterate.
Special meeting, so everybody kind of always their opinion on that.
So we can discuss that in a minute, but I, I do just wanna reiterate, you know, we went through these discussions where, you know, we disagreed. Very easy to, to share our responsibility and say, public, you decide. But the fact of the matter is that what we are, we're representational, you know, we're a republic. And in a republic, the populace has one time to voice their opinion, and that's on election day. If you wanna run for office, or if you wanna vote for candidate A versus candidate B, that's, you better, you know, figure out what their opinions are and then vote accordingly, because those people are gonna make the decisions for you. In Athens, you know, back in the day, everybody went to the, to the polls and the, and the.
Most, 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 like, and if we need to have a question, then we should have a question.
But, hang on, okay, so, so.
We have a special day, so we'll have an opportunity for the parents.
So I, so I did just wanna, you know, as we're having this conversation, I know, I know often times we're, we're a lockstep on a lot of things, and that's great, because I think we do a lot of due diligence on committees, but on topics where we disagree, we, we, we shouldn't ever abandon the process of what our system is designed to be. We are the decision-makers, and when we say, survey this, get opinions from, also, it's great to hear the concerns and shared ones. Absolutely, that should guide our decision-making, but it shouldn't be, we shouldn't wait to make our decisions, I guess.
How, how many times have I suggested, how much have I suggested that?
Well, it just sounds, well, we just went to survey, you know, the students and.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm very confused on that.
No, I was just gonna say, it's unfortunate, because my only issue with voting on this tonight is that it was not on the agenda that went on Friday.
Right.
And that, that survermens the process that's supposed to happen, which is the public's supposed to know when we're voting on something that happens in public.
So finding a motion.
So that, that's, that was the only reason, so that we start reinventing the wheel and saying, we're having a special meeting to get, see how we're built up a mask. We just wanna have a meeting with it on the agenda.
So, but, okay, so, here's the thing, though. We have, we, if we have a special meeting, the only topic's gonna be, so.
No, that's me, no. We could run a regular meeting. I have things.
No, 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 hang on, hang on, hang on. Please, please, hang on. If we're having a special meeting and we're all discussing, I mean, this is, let's just focus on, on the reality. If we have a special meeting, everyone has an opinion, and everyone's got one, on this topic is gonna come to it right there, why not just speak? And they're gonna speak about one topic, and it's gonna be about masks. Let's not pretend that we're gonna, you know, no one's coming out for item J here, about, like, no, no one.
We're actually, we're just making it so we need to get that, like.
Fine, but, but, but everyone, but it's a special meeting of the Board of Education to discuss masks. We all know what it would be. So I think is our, is that what we wanna do? Because I, I'm not in favor of, I, I mean, sorry, I'm a little confusing about how it would be, because I, I think these ideas are being developed as we speak, and I don't feel comfortable with committing to something like that at this point, like a survey or anything like that. Um, that's just my, I, I respect it. Um, but, so a special meeting, one second. So we have two options here. Uh, we can accept that the governor, you know, as already said, you have quite a correct decision, and, and do as other districts are, and, and vote tonight. Um, we can have a special meeting, and that would be, you know, we can have other items on it, but it's gonna be about masks. Or we can wait until March eight. And I really don't think that's a good decision, because Dr. Berlini has said that the administration and the teachers should have time to have discussions in class. What does it mean when we're gonna go mask optional? We haven't, we haven't been mask optional in, in two years. Students are not, you know, like, it's, it's a good conversation, the teachers and, and, and administration having their students. We're kind of seeing that away the way through the March eight. So that's my, yeah, I, I said.
Okay, I, I think that the answer to the survey is because of the, just like, um, she tried, it's, it's first that, um, let, just for us that, let's hear public's opinion about it. It doesn't matter whether we, whether we are deciding in favor of the public or, uh, the, own, our, our own decision. It doesn't matter. It's just like the, I guess, the, it was just like one of the suggestions, I think, that our, 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 we said that, that, just let's, uh, give us some time to digest this, uh, letter. So that we have, like, oh, so make ourselves, so we have time to think about it, and then let's decide. So like, that, that, yeah, that, that's the reason why, like, I don't, I, 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 I'm sorry, that, that, uh, we, 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 we give you very high time to decide this thing. However, yeah, we like to have, we like to have some time, just to digest it, and think about it, and then, at the same time, like, to, uh, be here to how, like, you know, other people think. And, thank you, Bryce. I think I can make an concluding comment, maybe hopefully, please, uh, that it seems like there's concerns. Some concerns about coming too quick, some concerns about not being on the agenda. I think that's a, I think that's a very valid point. But I also think that we, I would, I would get it, and thank you, Isaac, for your concern about my, my, uh, my job. Is that, uh, if we had, if we had any consent for February twenty-second, we would be not doing anything right now, because March eight would be, be, after, uh, March seventh, we have to February twenty-second. Since we just went to break, if we have a meeting on February twenty-third, we post it, we put that on the agenda. You, you have some billables because of the power. All right, fine, we just do. No, just so if we have a meeting on February twenty-third, I think it means everyone's concerned. Do we, do we accept the March seventh vote on that day? Do we have to tell the agenda so people can come and talk about it? It's not quickly done, so you can have a discussion with your constituents, whether it be, uh, in a survey, which we're not gonna do, or just, just every day, just hoping in Leonia, at, uh, H bar, or at some coffee shop in town, down in Dallas, you can get their input over the next two weeks. So we have time to do it if we have a special meeting. So my recommendation is, someone, please, please, we have a lot of things still on the agenda for tonight, please take a motion to move to a special meeting on February twenty-third.
Do you need to check the availability?
Yeah, I'd like to ask everyone availability here, um, but I, we need to approve having a special meeting at the same time. So, um, there's really no good options. We can just call a special meeting, so we'll, oh, yeah, so how about?
Yeah, I need to the process, uh, we have, we do it on March four, or, 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 or.
So why is it a Wednesday after the president's?
After the break, right?
Okay, so why don't we do this? Instead of setting a date tonight, because I don't think that's possible, because there's a board member, if my president's not here, I think everybody on the chair for him. Um, well, 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 hang on. We will, uh, if this is okay with everybody, uh, we'll table this conversation. We can set a date for a special meeting. Send it out to the secret committee, uh, and that date will be to be deter, to be determined. Uh, what's the next day or so? Will it all, all ask everybody? If you could send me your, how about this? If you just send me your availability between February twenty-third and what day? February twenty-third and what work's for you?
March seventh too, same, March seventh will be too.
Just to give you some.
It's just, it's just so you know, in terms of calling for a special meeting, right? Um, while we normally talk about them at board meetings, you don't, you don't have to do a vested board makes a decision, it's a whole collectively at board meeting. But with the majority of board members, believe that a special meeting is necessary. Obviously, you can't have a meeting to determine if you wanna have a meeting, right? So the law allows you, as a majority of the board, you know, you're meeting as a board, you can do a meeting now, but not decide to have a special meeting the next day, and that's when you have a meeting, and then that's when official action will take. So deciding to have a meeting is not official action, it's what you do with a meeting. So you're okay if you do it tomorrow, so I think.
February twenty-third, the morning of.
We'll figure the dates out, but, all right, so.
Anyone, would you that?
Yeah.
We're having a special meeting.
Huh? Please.
Whereas, I don't remember, if, you remember, last year I did a survey for when LHS switched the schedule. Um, and thinking about it now, when I did, I thought it was a great idea, but I, there was some, so there was a mix of, like, qualitative questions saying, like, do you agree with the schedule yes or no, and there's also sections kind of asking, why don't you agree with the schedule? Where, what I realized is, while we got the broader responses, those broader responses, I think, were heavily skewed towards one side, because personally, I knew people that didn't really have a problem with the new free period schedule, but almost none of those people actually filled out the survey. So I kind of side with Bryce on the idea that it might be skewed towards people who are heavily, uh, who heavily believe in one idea.
Can I make it out of my mind?
Yeah, Mary. Ted, please, please. Let board members have a dialogue, please.
Nothing. Um, I, I'm actually against having a special meeting, but while I appreciate all the input from our community members, I don't think it needs to be done at a board meeting. I think it should be done to the admin of the building, so that the admin can help make the plans, give the feedback to the board, so that we can go forward with all of this. That's my opinion.
I'm on clarification, about any rule of views.
Do you think we should just vote?
I think we should just vote. That's what my, I think we should just vote on it. And if it votes down, then if they want it, if everybody wants to have the special meeting, then, you know, then maybe we'll have grounds then for a special meeting. But I think if we vote on it tonight, and it passes, that we're gonna go mask optional starting March seventh, then there's no need for a special meeting.
Uh, what, what about that, it's the same thing, um, we, 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 we are not transmasing on. We, the public doesn't know whether we are voting for that.
Well, if, if you have a motion within a second.
Yeah.
Then you vote out. So if people wanted to do the mask optional starting March seventh, you go yes. If you don't wanna do it, or if you don't wanna do it until you have the vote, uh, as question B, then you vote no. That's the way I would do it.
Okay.
All right.
I think that's.
No, no, hang on, forget the March eight, I think that's. Everyone forgets.
Yeah, so, so if you have a motion in a second to say that effective March seventh, your policy will be that masks are optional, right? Then you're gonna take a vote on it. And if, obviously, if you want it to be the case, you're gonna vote yes. Presumably, if people either disagree with it, or they don't wanna make the, they don't wanna vote on it now, then they just vote no. And it could be that you're gonna discuss it again on March, on, on whatever day, if, if you have a special meeting, right?
Okay, yeah. The no mean, you know, what, what?
Well, no, no, no could be one of many things, right? I don't wanna do it now, so I can't do it ever, or I don't wanna do it after.
So here's what we're, here's what we're gonna.
Yes and only, yes is the only thing that matters today.
All right, I think we're a little on the surface of it. I like the same motion. So.
Wait, make a motion.
Wait, hang. Well, just, hang on, I just wanna be very clear, everybody. So I think it would make sense then, it sounds like there's two opinions here. Some people wanna have a special meeting, they should be determined, some people would like to vote no. So there are people who would like to vote no, you can make a motion, and if that fails, then we'll have another motion, not a special meeting. And if you, so if you would rather vote at that special meeting, vote yes to the special meeting, vote no to, kind of. If you don't want a special meeting, and you think you're ready to vote, vote yes for the person.
Well, maybe, then we'll do.
Or no.
Or no, if you don't agree, or no, if you don't agree. You go ahead and go ahead. All right, so.
It's good, Mike.
There was a motion, there was a second, Maria? So to be clear, to be clear, this motion, and maybe I'll be trying to come wrong, because you're one of them, is to approve mask optional tonight for March seventh. Period.
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 Okay.
All right. Can I, Eli?
All right. All right, you're all alive. All right, there's just one problem, it's under, please, sorry. You don't find it.
If people are looking, I got, they'll find it.
So, let's say that the, the, one slight issue, that it's a different link, but all you gotta do is just refresh Leonia School's YouTube page, and the live link is now up. Um. And I.
I'll kind of right now, it's like a ten-second delay.
Okay.
Are you able to see, like, the viewer, like we did at the zoo?
I'm waving right now. Oh, I can't see who the viewers are.
Right, okay.
Um. And I'll just go an extra step, one second. I'll share on our Facebook right now. Okay, one second. How do I copy?
Because of nine thousand people, I don't think nine thousand people are watching the show. I'm gonna kill, I'm gonna kill my crowd. I get killed.
Just give me one second, they're gonna call a special meeting, in terms of whether or not you should send a reminder.
My Mr., uh, who is giving the, right now? This for daddy, you know, the pastor, blessing, and he currently can't divide by, by a quarter parent, three lines. So he goes, you need to separate this from that quarter parent. I'm sorry, right, no, we don't, we don't have that capability. But it was, it was a, it was a regular lot, it wasn't, I was.
I don't know. All right, so, um, you know, a second here, sorry. Okay, so I just posted on our Facebook as well, so if people are looking on Facebook or YouTube, uh, all they have to do is go on our page.
So do you wanna give a recap of what happened right before we cut it out?
Yeah.
So there was a big conspiracy theory, and the room got sold.
Like, when you go through C F A, you have words.
Yeah, I see, I don't see.
That's true, that's true. All right, so, let's recap. Um. Kind of a question.
Yes.
Can we just vote again, but on the wall, over the same way? First time, recap.
Why don't we recap and say what happened?
You wanna still reconsider your. You know, you can make a motion. The link's out now.
Well, well, first things first, we should say.
All right, so.
What happened?
Thank you. So that's our word.
Okay. And you can, you can, there can still be a motion for reconsideration, but.
All right, so, to anyone who was inconvenienced by our technology, which I think has been everybody in the entire district for this past year, uh, including the board, um, at the moment of suspense, just like the Sopranos, it just went to black. And, uh, during that moment of suspense, during that moment of suspense, the board voted. The board voted in favor, five, four, to repeal, or sorry, not repeal. The board voted in favor, five-four, to repeal, or sorry, not to repeal, to, uh, go mask optional effective March seventh. Yeah, but the feed cut, you know, right at the perfect time, so people watching couldn't see. The link is now, uh, a different YouTube live link, but it's on our YouTube page, so if someone's on our YouTube page, they'll be able to see it, and I just posted it on Facebook. Um, and that's, that is where we stand ten minutes later, so, uh, you know, that, it, it's embarrassing, the state of our, our district's tech infrastructure. Um, the second meeting that this has happened is really unacceptable. Um, I know our mics, I've been getting texts that our mics go in and out, and I know Kevin's getting new mics, but we, we gotta make it happen, because. I understand that people aren't ready, we're, excuse me, aren't yet ready to return to large meetings. Uh, we should accommodate them to some degree, and, and, uh, this, this was working well when we first tried it. So, you know, I think they deserve to, to participate, you know, by listening and watching our meeting as well, um. And some portion that we've been dealing with these different issues, but, uh, as I just said, the vote was five-four in favor of repeat, uh, of, of going mask optional effective March seventh. Um, all right, so with that being said, is there, is there, um, any discussion? Because it's unusual that we, we, we did all this, so any discussion?
No.
Mary, did you have anything about that?
Yeah, I'm gonna motion to reconsider. Maybe cut out for a reason, and now we're much in feedback, people that are looking.
Can, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
We, we didn't vote, Dr. Riley and Michelle McCall, you're super, would it be fair, maybe you just address the community tomorrow, we made a video and sent that out to your line? Like, to explain to the community what, you know, the decision may be, I, because we made the decision ultimately to put down the administration to explain it, and maybe it would be best if, if, and I, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
But we're gonna change, if the vote is changed.
Well, if, if the vote is gonna change, then that's, that's fine, but I'm just considering options, because we did vote, and I, I know the circumstances aren't ideal. Um, but I don't know how many people are watching, and to, you know, I don't know, you're bringing up your point, but I'm just thinking maybe there's alternatives to address the transparency aspect. It just seems like, I think we're all, this is kind of what we're on right now, so we probably understand the concerns. But I think, you know, I don't know, I just think it's gonna, but I, I don't know. Do you want to?
I guess the question is, do you, do you formally want to make a motion to reconsider, and if so, then do we have a second? So I'm gonna ask you, do you want to make a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, so that's a motion on the, on the table, is there a second for that? Okay, that's one second, okay, so now, it's a motion to reconsider what was previously adopted. Um, so now we have to either have a discussion or take a vote on, um, the motion to reconsider.
All right, discussion, good discussion. I, I would, I, I do, I would just say that, uh, you know, we voted, uh, I think it's unfortunate what happened, um, but it doesn't change what happened. And I imagine ninety-five, that's, that's exactly, I would say ninety-nine point five percent of community members are not watching the beginning with. But I don't know how big of a disruption it was to, to their participation, um, and we still made a vote. So I, I would hope that, you know, we honor that vote. I understand the reasons why some would want to, uh, change it, because our lives, our technology's not working with us, but it doesn't change our decision-making process, doesn't change Ed's timeline, or the administration's timeline. And yeah, but that, 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 that's all it was down. But is there any discussion on the, okay.
On the, on the comment about, uh, that this was not on the agenda for tonight, we've had new business presented in meetings, which is also have not been on, added to the agenda until the last minute. So I feel like this is kind of part of that, this sort of new business. Uh, it's also something from the government, it's not something that just happened in our community, or just happened within our own district. This is a statewide, uh, decision by the governor, we've been following his mandates, you know, all through the pandemic, we've been following CDC, NJ DOH, uh, D, DOH, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we've been following all of that, so why we shouldn't follow this now, his recommendation for March seventh, I don't know, we should, I think. And, you know, the concession that we're gonna be making is make it mask optional, we're not asking somebody to take off their mask immediately.
Further discussion, or do we?
Well, actually, what the governor says is that, um, you know, make a, the governor makes the optional, it's gonna let it, uh, the district decide. So the governor never says that the, whether you should wear or not, just like the district, you decide on your own. So there's nothing to whether, like, whether he's, he think, he just like, um, I don't know, his, uh, political reason, whatever he's, he's behind, I don't know about that. He just like, you know, let the district decide, he's, he's, that's what it is.
Well, I'll just be clear, what the governor said was that you can go mask optional, you can't require people to take their masks off, and that's not what we would be doing, it would be either mask optional or not mask optional. So if you want to wear one, you can wear one still, we're not trying to people to take them off, and I don't, I think the board and the administration should be very agnostic on the, on, on mask policies. What we should make a decision on is whether or not to allow the optional aspect, um.
You're like, when, he, he couldn't have said that like a left.
So, I don't have so, you're, you're, you're correct, that's what he wrote. Uh, so is there any further discussion on reconsider, the reconsideration vote?
One more thing, um, I do think this is different than a normal new business item that might be walked on at the last minute. I think this is a pretty large decision. Um, I think it, it was kind of thrown at us at the last minute, and I think because of that, it does deserve special consideration at another meeting.
So a discussion. I mean, I, I would just say, I, I'm not gonna disagree with kind of it was thrown on us on March seventh, you know, I, I found out, we'll do it or something.
Yes.
Um, one, one o'clock, um, but everyone in New Jersey knows that that happened, I think, if you're, if you're paying attention, you know that the governor lifted it. And I think it would be logical to assume that the Board of Education, which has been discussing both every single meeting, might be the first thing they discuss at that upcoming meeting, even though it was the next day. Um, but I, you know, point well taken, very clear for me. Uh, is there further discussion on, on, uh, on rescinding the decision? No, there are.
I, I could wait, yeah, um, the reason why I said no is because I had thought that it would benefit everybody to have a little bit more time to think about it. Um, I'm the representative from Edgewater, we have our next board meeting on Thursday, so we're faced with a similar type schedule. And I, I really wanted to bring back to, to Edgewater what the discussion was like tonight. Um, by the same token, I'd like to share what our discussion on Thursday is back with Mionia. With that said, if the reason why I wanted to hold off deciding until we felt more comfortable or had more of a discussion. I would have all of a sudden advocated to see if we could possibly be earlier, because if part of the reason to decide tonight was to give Dr. Bertolini and the staff time to put everything in motion. I don't know that February twenty-third is enough, except, or maybe you could speak to that. So I'm, I'm a little kind of roundabout, I, but I. I, I guess I feel that if, if there is more discussion. And I do also want to say, I strongly support you, Bryce, when you say that it is our decision. And then I think going to what, uh, Donnie was saying earlier, getting, uh. Feedback to educate ourselves is something different than getting a survey. So I, and that, that's what was leading me to ask for more time to think about things. But ultimately, I agree, it's our decision. Thank you.
One, one, one last thing, uh, that I would just, or maybe my kind of recommendation would be, I think I kind of already said it, but I'll say it again. That I think we should respect the, the vote that the board had, uh, the prior vote, and I think that, uh, the administration now should explain to the public what the board's doing, or what their direction is. Um, and take on the me, the messaging from there, because. I'm gonna just ask you all the questions, think about maybe yourself, but what you just voted now, the same as you'll vote later on, and if so, then. We're just delaying something that's gonna happen anyways, for the sake of. I don't know what, for so that the public can, for so that some members of the public can feel that their representatives listen to them, and I think, quite frankly, we've had two years of listening to the public, a lot of these decisions. We've met with countless members of the public, and I can tell you how lots of my neighbors feel one way or another, I'm sure so do many of you, and now it's time to make hard decisions. Um, and this is certainly one of them, and I, and, and I, and I hope that, you know, no, I, I don't envy the decision-making of any of us, like, it's what we're forced to do. So we re, if we reconsider it, we'll vote again, I suppose, in the future. If we don't, I think the administration tomorrow should make a video, send it out on Remind on YouTube, Facebook, et cetera, explaining our decision, explain the mishap that happened, that's an option too. But yeah, is there further discussion? You have the mic. Sure, I'll, you.
I mean, I'm, I probably seem like the biggest flip-flopper in the world here, because, you know, I'm all into the last vote on all of this stuff, the money, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, it's on when I don't want it on, and I'm on. It's on, okay, so, um. I mean, I think the big thing here, and I want to keep saying it over and over again, is just, it wasn't on the agenda, so I think. It's, and it's not like any new business item, I don't think, new business items are perfect, but just administratively, have to be passed. By the way, that happened to come up after the packet goes out, and then I think we have, to your point, right, involve the public a lot. On all of our decisions around COVID, we haven't always, governors left a lot of stuff up to districts, right? And we made our own decisions a lot of times, you know, some schools were revoked for a lot of last year, some schools, you know, we, we came up with a lot of our own decisions. And I, I feel that, um. Will I change my vote based on a special meeting? Probably not, because you're right, we are elected to make these decisions. But the fact that the, the public didn't have any chance to comment on this, because it wasn't on the agenda, it, I, I feel like procedurally, we should hear from people, we should know. And I don't feel that we should leave it up to the administration to have to deal with a little back from the public tomorrow.
That was.
That could have happened at a meeting where it should happen, where the public should come and help with it. So I don't know if that makes sense to everyone, but like, you know, the public, this wasn't on the agenda tonight, the public couldn't come up, we couldn't hear from them, right? The public has come to meetings in the past, and, and yeah, it is hard then to vote the different way, but I, I just feel like that should be the procedure. Right, it should be that the public can come and. We should hear from them before we vote.
On the agenda, my.
So it's difficult, and I don't want a special meeting for it, I wish we had another board meeting, because it's not on the agenda for it, I would be, I'd kill it. We have a regular board meeting, and we could vote on it there, but went out in advance. This is a very unique situation.
Is there any further discussion? Saying none, so on the question about rescinding the vote, what's it?
So, so it's a.
Yeah.
So it's a motion to reconsider.
Yeah.
And it was made by an individual who was voting on the prevailing side, so it's a valid motion to reconsider under Robert Jewell's order. So now, what you basically are gonna do is vote on the same question again, so the same, right, it's the same answer. So if you, if you want to do masks, um, optional starting March seventh, you vote yes. If you don't want to do that, or if you don't know if you want to do that until after a special meeting, or whatever the case might be, whatever reason you have, you vote no, but you're basically revoting on the same thing we just voted. Right? Because, because just to clarify, if you're doing a motion to rescind, it's usually something that was done in a prior meeting, and then you're rescinding it, we're still within the same meeting, so it's a motion to reconsider. But if, if, if it was someone who voted no, made the motion to reconsider, technically, you can't do that. If someone who voted yes, so you can.
What is the new thing?
Yeah, I had to check that.
We should have been voting, should be at a special meeting before voting on this.
Well, that was.
But it was.
We'll vote on that.
Yeah, you have to, yeah, okay, so now you're taking a vote on it, again, masks optional starting on March seventh, yes or no?
And do you want to change key orders or the?
I know, I just, I'll keep the same one, but I just want to.
I just want to explain that Christina's at the end, but she's not, because we're running late, so. I don't get it, that's because they're similar, you can follow me. Same question, so yes, you want it optional, no, you don't want it right now, or not at all. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Troy?
No.
Ms. Jesus?
Yes.
Ms. Melman?
No.
Ms. Park?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiles?
No.
Ms. Rocker?
No.
Mr. Robb, president?
Thank you. Yes. If it's five.
No, it's five-four, four, four, no.
Four, four, five, yeah.
Four, five, okay.
All right, so.
Four, five.
For the motion to bill.
All right, okay, so now, the next motion is.
All right, so is our motion, do you have a special meeting, and the date to be determined?
Yeah.
Someone like to make a motion? Christina, is there a second? Donnie? Discussion?
I agree with Christina's point, if we can have it earlier, I think that's, that's the better for our, you know, admin, he's came, or if that's better. Yeah, it is, it is better for you.
For me, it'd be better if you feel comfortable, again, that's the same thing I said earlier, if you feel comfortable, so today's February eighteen. Uh, February fifteenth, I'm sorry, February, not February eighteen, that's. Um, I, I guess most people's Tuesdays are available, uh, we could go.
I would prefer if we had a meeting on a regular meeting day, because that's consistent with the public, when we would.
Tuesday, I think.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Oh, so, yes.
Either February fifteen or March first, either one, if we have a week, we, we can do it, we can plan for it, if we, if we need a week, if we only have a week, we can plan for it, if we find out. So I would argue, I, I don't argue, March first is fine, if you want to wait enough time to really get a feeling for whatever you, your mind wants to do, and it doesn't impact the vote to.
I have a question, what's the difference between March first and March eighth? Like, what's the difference, if we, we just have it as part of our regular March eighth?
It was March seventh.
Okay, so we start at, you know, the next week, right, like that, we do it March first, because you have weeks to plan, or we do it March eighth, you perhaps still have the same week to plan.
That's, we're not.
Right, because the policies say.
I just think with the idea.
I know you were just offering, but I personally want to have it earlier, like fifteen.
Yes, and to, back to Christina's point, she's gonna be able to bring some, you know, input from her meeting, and I think that's gonna be very beneficial. I don't, I don't think that would change, right, between March first and March eighth. But I just, I just think like, to me, I think special meetings, like, I don't know, just so many meetings.
It's so disruptive.
And I'm not sure, like, this going around in circles, like, anything's gonna change.
I, I absolutely would agree with that, like, I don't think there should be a special meeting that's just about masks, but I do think it's, it's a big enough issue, that is unfortunate, it couldn't get on a gen, in a regular agenda for a board and a public.
Certainly, certainly.
But March eighth also allows, you know, us four more weeks to see where numbers stand, what other districts are doing.
I, I certainly, in, in the update, it reminds, make it clear that the board will need on March eighth, if they're able to make a scheduled meeting, and it is a day later, and so it's not that big a deal. But you can have time on March eighth, which is a regular scheduled meeting, not a special meeting, we could do March eighth, but you know, that's up to whoever made that last motion, I don't know.
Or. Also, but, you know, twenty-five minutes ago, we all laughed at the March eighth option, and now we're gonna go with it, because we said that.
If the other option is March first, to me, it just is like another night.
So, so my question is, why didn't it go on March eighth in the first place?
March eighth, oh, because people were discussing that, so we discussed.
I mean, we, we could it.
We could put it on March eighth, that's fine.
Could we change it on the first place?
We change March eighth to March first?
No, you gotta, you gotta, that special meeting, you gotta advertise that there's a lot of things that happen to switch it. We, we could switch it, we do anything we.
I, I was just trying to think outside the box.
So.
Wait, March eighth? Someone's gotta make a motion.
Oh, we had.
There is a motion on the table.
Which.
We're still in discussion.
Hold on, or it's not.
And there's like, there's a, a real possibility, it sounds like, that even on March eighth, despite the governor saying, like, mask optional, like, this, this particular community, if you, but maybe all. It's actually these masks mandatory. new, but we vote, it's actually these masks mandatory.
I don't know. So, so I am, I'm like, I'm gonna join Maria in the, on the ranks of, if I get more information, make me feel more comfortable about things in my vote, I would change to a yes, so.
Like if we don't? Right? I, I'm just saying, like, I don't know, I just, it doesn't make sense to me, like, would we go out with stuff with, like, right, that's the, than other communities?
I mean, I agree with you, I mean, how much is gonna happen between now and those two weeks, I mean, what information do people want? I mean, it seems like some people might, might have been already stressed, and right now, it's like we're going, right, and I agree with, all right, I think just having it on the meeting is, is just, it's really, it seems like a waste of time, and it seems to be the time to be, just like, you know, inefficiently, you know?
Well, and one piece of information that I think I could supply tomorrow, that, as I, I told, telling somebody during the break, East Bergen should pretend to be tomorrow, and that's the, that's another one topic, and they said today, but no one really had a clear-cut answer as of Saturday noon, so tomorrow morning I'll have what the rest of our areas can probably do, maybe, or the following day, I'll probably get definite answers.
Can I just say, like, for me, it's like four things can change between now and potentially March eighth, it's access to vaccines for our pre-K students, it's booster shots for, um, the high school, like more students getting boosted, um, it's what happens at Christina's meeting, and that's what the rest of Bergen County is doing, but I feel like I get all of that information to make my decision, and that is very well to change, it's just right now, in combination with it not being on the agenda, and not having all that information, like, it's just too soon, but I'm totally fine with, you know, putting it on the March eighth agenda.
Yeah, I just want to echo Christina and Kim, um, me and I, like I said, in the very beginning, um, like, mask optional aside, that's what I want personally, but as a board member, I don't feel comfortable making that decision, like, I mean, I made a decision, and we're reconsidering right now, and now we're voting on another motion, um, but that, that's exactly what I'm going with right now, I just want to be more secure for, I'm not saying I'm looking for the entry, so I can vote the entry, no, it's not that, I just wanna be able to have a little bit of time and talk to parents, hear from friends, neighbors, and hear from Ed about what other schools are doing within the county, and all, all different things. So that's why I keep saying, like, I want it earlier, that's my personal preference, cause I don't need a whole lot of time, and I just wanna be able, just not like right now at the moment, that, that's, yeah.
Is there further discussion?
A vote is.
So, if you want to have a meeting.
Special meeting.
Let me just, you want to have a meeting on March eighth, you're gonna vote no. You want to discuss this and vote on this on March eighth, beyond a regular agenda as scheduled, you'll vote no. If you want to have a special meeting on a date to be decided, vote yes.
Yep, that's, yeah, that's simple.
All right.
Eighty is an option.
So it's time, so, be clear.
You can say that one more time.
Yep.
Special, what, you're voting yes and no on a special meeting?
So, all right, so, here's what you're gonna vote on. If you vote yes, it's because you wanted to have a special meeting before March eighth to discuss one topic and one topic only, that's our school mask call. You vote no, because you wanted to have a discussion, a discussion at the regular board meeting on March eighth. Either way, we're gonna send it out to the community as we typically would.
And while the final answer, when we're gonna be, see if there's a special meeting for, for March eighth.
So, that, that's what you're voting on, so yes, if you want a special meeting, no, if you would rather vote on it on March eighth. Either, one of those meetings, we're gonna discuss and vote on it, question is which one? So.
Yeah, I ask one more thing.
Sure.
Make this crazy again, um, our new civic question, is it, is there an option to ask Bryce to call a special meeting after Ed's meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, the majority of the board feels that they want to have, so let's say something happened in the universe, you know, on Friday, and you said, well, we really should call it for a special meeting next Tuesday, um, so long as you can get it in the paper with sufficient time, if the majority of the board wants to have a special meeting, you can make the determination without having a meeting, right? You don't have to have a meeting to determine if you want a special meeting. So yes, you can, you can all decide, if the majority of the board wants to call a special meeting, then the business administrator will advertise in the paper, and then you would schedule a special meeting.
Exactly.
Christina, I just wanted to answer, I don't know if we have any answers tomorrow, we're gonna be discussing, so I don't want to give you that, that tomorrow all schools are coming to do it, I think they'll probably be in session.
But I, but I, so I want to be clear, the concern is, well, if we don't decide today to have a special meeting, there's no way we can ever meet before the eighth, that's not correct. You could still meet before the eighth, but you have to, the majority, majority of you would have to want to have a special.
How does that happen? Just by, I don't know the answer to that.
Just by way of, whether it's by way of email or, you know, phone communication.
It's already, the majority of the board said, I'm gonna have a special meeting.
Right, notifies Bryce, then Bryce would notify you saying, I've spoken to a majority of the board, they want to have a special meeting, so let's call me.
Okay. So.
One last question for Ed, does it make a big difference to you whether it's a special meeting, like, the same as three firsts as March eighth?
I just have to adjust how I transition, that's all. I'll do whatever the board does, whatever the board says, I'll do. I could transition quickly, with more emphasis, more detail, and more, uh, uh, more time to do it during, during the day, with the school, with the principals, and with the students, or I can spread it out, so either way, we'll work it out, but that, that, that should be your concern right now, just whether I can want to have a special meeting or meeting due on the agenda on March eighth, which I, which I'll be discussing.
I, I, I'm just gonna make one last, um, sorry, um, some of the people that voted with me on, on the masks, I, I think we disagree on the special meeting, and I, and I'm gonna say why. I think, uh, having an extra meeting might be important, um, we talked about, you know, social emotional learning and, and the consequences that this pandemic has had on people, um, including our teachers, I think our teachers get lost a lot when we're talking about SCL and whatnot, the pandemic has had, just look at the data, it's like half the teachers nationwide are looking for jobs outside of education, so if we're gonna make a decision on, it goes into effect March seventh, right, statewide, March eighth we make a decision, and boom, March, March ninth, everyone's gonna take their masks off, I think that's, that might cause a bit of, of, of concern amongst people who, who do have a, a concern about COVID, uh, the risk of COVID, um, and I would rather give those people more time to consider, you know, to, to come to terms with the fact that we're going back to normal, uh, we're going back to a sense of normalcy, and I feel like if you just thrust it upon people, there's gonna be a lot more backlash, and if you give people time to say, okay, we're gonna go back to normal, I have some anxieties about it, let me ask my teacher about it, maybe the teachers want to ask the administrators about it, um, and I just think that, you know, March eighth, boom, March ninth, I'm just concerned about it.
But, but, but it has to be March ninth, and we decide that it should be, okay, we made a decision today, but then let's give two weeks, then.
Okay, and you can do that.
And they can start preparing that, right? Like, it's in the news.
Well, for, 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 without masks, right? Whatever, right? But could be, um, you say like a week, right, and maybe right now conversation is, it, this might happen, so maybe, maybe some of the conversations only start, right, or maybe a week.
Yeah.
Since we have to be late, but, right?
That's a, that's a fair point, but, but, that's absolutely a fair point.
If there's a department that's school, they would have to start on that night. The only question is, are there parents who are gonna send their kids in without masks on March seventh, because the governor's mandate expired or something?
That would be my responsibility to make sure it gets messaged out, and I can remind people.
Right, so that's what happened in Virginia, right?
Yeah.
But Leonie's not Virginia, to be quite honest.
No, 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 hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
He's very good for Bergen County.
That was a very fair point, I think. The, the governor made an executive order in Virginia that said, no more masks in schools, and then you had kids showing up to school with no masks, and the school said, no, that's not our rule, and there was a lot of confusion, but that's a very valid point.
The masks of county, right?
Well, just, just to be clear, I want to make sure we're clear about one thing, the governor's executive order says that local school districts need to make a decision, which is distinct and different from saying, you know, like, you can't have a mask, like, if, if, if the governor's order said, effective March seventh, no schools can mandate masks, it's very different from what.
No, I agree with that, I agree with that, but Maria's talking about the confusion around parents, and I think that's a very valid point, that people hear, more people listened to the governor yesterday than were watching our board meeting today, and more people have it in their heads that on March seventh, that thing is gone, so I do think there will be confusion, hang on, so I do think there will be confusion unless there is proper.
There was a mask optional order last year.
There was, yeah.
I remember, I went mask, mask.
There was, yeah.
At the end of last year, I thought it was mask optional, this is not the first time this has happened.
That's right.
We didn't go mask optional last year.
And I think we.
Obviously, that was a decision we made, it never came to the board, or whatever, it's, to me, that's the same thing that's happening now.
Yeah, that's.
And I would argue strongly that, and, and I know Donnie and Isaac are part of the workforce of the non-communication fifth grade, and since then, we have a very cohesive remind, and we have a week, a five-weekly update, but the information is, is out there, so I don't, I think there will be some that will come in and say, oh, we thought about that, they don't want to wear a mask, but I think we could clearly show, and I, I, Maria forgot that we wore masks, and it's our last year, and the district's mask optional, and again, our student athletes wear masks at most schools, as you know, as you've said tonight, they don't wear masks, so if we can get the message out clearly that the decision we made on March eighth, when and if the district will go mask optional, and, and make sure it gets out there, I do not think there'll be as much confusion as in other areas, cause we do use your mind a lot, uh, I, people come to one of me in the Wednesday meetings, and this is a tendency, because I always send the message out the night before to get parents ready for a late opening, I think it's good, especially for younger parents, uh, younger students, to make sure they care about childcare, but I send that message out, I think it's good because it gets the information out, so you're aware of the possibility, and, and your minds are, are very easy to do, again, even though.
So, we're, it's late, we still have a disciplinary hearing, a closed session we have to get to, so, we, you know, we're having a two-day meeting, it seems, but, let's, let's, um, let's, let's vote, so if you're voting yes, you want a special meeting, voting no is gonna be on the March eighth agenda.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Alvenice.
No.
Can you repeat what?
No, 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 no. No, no means, no, no special meeting, no special meeting. No means, no special meeting.
Right, yes, yes, nothing bad.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm really going on here. Okay, I'm sorry. It was loud, but.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mary, it's late, I just want to help her. Ms. Troy?
No.
Ms. De Jesus?
No.
Ms. Melman?
No.
Ms. Park?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Ms. Wildes?
No.
Ms. Racco? President Ross?
I made a whole shtick about, yes, but then again, don't vote on a losing horse. Vote your conscience, I'm gonna vote my conscience and say yes.
Oh!
Okay, doesn't pass.
Doesn't pass, but go on March eighth.
March eighth.
Yes.
Whether the YouTube live works or not, or whatever we have, we'll make it very clear to the public, come to our meeting, we're gonna discuss it, raise your opinions, share your information, I hope that we can have a dis, uh, discussion as cordial as tonight was, and as productive, maybe not as long.
Maybe not as long.
But, all right, so you know what?
You know, there's one thing, I think that should be a takeaway, is that there is, like, mask optional is going to happen, whether it happens on March eighth, whether it happens on March fifteenth, whether it happens in June, whenever it's gonna happen, so, you know, we're giving people time to prepare, start preparing now, because at some point it's going to happen, right? So.
There you go. All right, with that being said, I think we're at closed session, is that correct?
Well, I'm.
Oh, the student athletes, I think let's just table tomorrow.
Yeah, table tomorrow.
Is there a motion to table tomorrow?